All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December 7th, 2022 School Committee Meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to all of our guests tonight. We have a full house. Our first item of business, we have our middle school student representatives, Hayden Steen and Nick Iantilli. Will you come on down, please? Thank you. Thank you for being here, and congratulations on Elf.
The Wilmington Middle School has been very busy preparing for winter celebrations.
We kicked off our winter celebrations by showcasing the many talents of our WMS students. The drama club continues to outdo itself with another outstanding performance. The musical Elf hit the WMS Days December 1st, 2nd, and 3rd with four outstanding performances. Congrats to Miss Printeville and the entire cast of Elf.
Middle School chorus students performed along with the WHS chorus at the Joanne Benton Auditorium on Tuesday, December 6th. This was a great way to kick off the holiday season and celebrate winter. Students performed songs like "White Christmas" and "Underneath the Tree."
The WMS Concert Band will be performing alongside the high school on December 8th. It is always an impressive event to see the Wilmington High School and the Wilmington Middle School Concert Bands playing together.
World Culture Club wrapped up November celebrating some of the traditions of the Native American culture. Students listened to traditional music and ate cornbread while they learned about their traditions. Students were also treated to an extra meeting date to watch different countries participate in the World Cup. This was a great opportunity for our students to learn about the most popular sport in the world, 3.5 billion followers, known in most countries as football.
The 6th grade will have their annual gingerbread making celebration on Friday, December 23rd. This has been a wonderful tradition that all our 6th grade students look forward to. We cannot wait to see the tasty creations students come up with this year.
Student Council continues to be very busy this time of year. We have planned a spirit week for the week of the 19th to the 23rd. Stay tuned for the upcoming themes. Student Council is also looking forward to our winter decorating event in conjugation with advisory. The students at WMS will be creating snowmen similar to door decorating to celebrate and spread that winter's spirit.
Thank you so much for letting us know what's going on. Does anyone have any questions?
Just a comment and congratulations on Elf. I know most of us in the room were there. It was outstanding. You guys all did a great job, so.
We have Santa and Mrs. Claus with us.
I'm trying not to give it away.
So, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. We really appreciate it, and we hope you have a great December. All right. Our next item of business that has filled our room tonight with so many students, we have the Athletics Department Fall Review of Wilmington High School Athletics Presentation. Mr. Ingram.
Thank you all for having me. All right. We'll get right started here. This is the Fall Athletic Review. First off, we have our cheer team, and we have our cheer team with us tonight. They're the Middle Sex League champs. They qualified for the All-State Competition. We have head coach Christina Zuccaro here. Assistant coaches Kylie Ballerio and Ally Fogg, Tiffany Smith, Senior All-Star, Erin Murray, freshman All-Star, and Kelsey McKenzie, Junior All-Star. And since we have all the girls here tonight, I'd just like to introduce them, and girls can just stand and just wave. That'd be great. Thank you. I promised them there was no speaking parts. Sarah Gillespie. Kaylee Cunningham. Kelsey McKenzie. Madison Murray. Mary Almas. Isabel Iscone. Isabel Cooper. Emma Chericello. Lillian King. Maya Lanzi. Lily McLaughlin. Erin Murray. And there was four members of the team not here tonight that I'd just like to mention. Tiffany Smith, Emma Erickson, Brooke Gifford, and Ava T. Burt. Excellent season for the girls, and we just wanted to try to promote the outstanding season, the athletes and the coaches, and thank them for taking their time out of their busy schedule to make it down here tonight. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Can you present them?
Sure, yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Okay.
So, on behalf of the School Committee, Wilmington and the district, we just wanted to say we're so proud of you and thank you for representing our town so well, for your commitment to your sport, but also to academics and the service that you provide around town. We're just so thrilled that you're here with us tonight and so proud of your accomplishments. So, congratulations. We have a certificate for you, recognition and achievement, and we actually thought we could present it to the captains, and the captains could actually present it to their coach, and the coach could then display it. So, are our captains here or no?
Thank you.
Okay, the next team that we brought along with us tonight is the girls' cross-country team. They were 6-0. They were league champs in cross-country. It's broken off into Liberty for large and Freedom for the small. They were the Freedom Champs. Head coach Joe Patron, assistant coach Brian Shepherd, Mallory Brown was a Senior All-Star, Hannah Bryson, Junior All-Star, Charlotte Kylie was an 8th grade All-Star, and Addison Hunt was a sophomore, league MVP. The team qualified for the All-State Meet at Fort Devens, and just like we did before, we have the whole team here. So, girls, when I call your name, wave, stand up, just acknowledge, please. Captain Mallory Brown, Captain Hannah Bryson, Addison Hunt, Kaylee Israelson, Charlotte Kylie, Mia Strollick, Isabel Zaya, and we have Coach Joe Patron, and he's probably going to kill me for this, today is Coach Patron's 60th birthday.
Oh!
Congratulations. And just like the cheer team, we'd like to thank them for an outstanding season, the coaches, the athletes, spending all the time they did. It's really a successful season. And thank you for taking the time. I know many of the girls on the team also have commitments in the winter with athletics and working, that they were able to free up their time to come down. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Well, we actually have another certificate for the cross-country team, but I love birthdays, so I think it would be so great to say happy birthday. Is that good? All right, one, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Coach. Happy birthday to you.
What a pleasant surprise.
I'm sure Coach Patron is feeling the same thought right now.
Girls cross country. Girls cross-country, on behalf of the School Committee and Wilmington, the town, the district, we are so proud of you, and it is such a joy to witness your successes. We thank you for your service. We thank you for your commitment to your sport and for all that you do for our town and for both teams for being such a good representation, but also such good role models for all the students who are coming up to start their sports a year or a couple of years from now. So, thank you very, very much. If I could have the captains, and then you could present this to your coach.
Thank you very much to both teams and coaches for coming down. We really appreciate that. Moving on to the rest of the teams in the fall. Boys soccer had a record of 3, 11, and 4. Head coach Steve Scanlon, JV coach Christopher Greco, JVB coach Jared Constantino. Ryan Wilson was a Senior All-Star. Remy Elliott was a Junior All-Star. The picture we have here is the team and coach celebrating his 700th career varsity win. That's for multiple sports. It's for hockey and soccer. I asked him to say something nice, and he said, "It just means I'm old." Eventually, they made it to the state tournament, and they lost to Linfield 3-2. We have girls soccer. They finished with a record 6, 6, and 7. Head coach Sue Hendy, JV coach MJ English, and assistants Shane Kligerman and Chris Fersori. Colleen Baldi was a Senior All-Star. Molly McDonald was a Junior All-Star. Ashley Mercier was a Junior All-Star. Jill Collins was a sophomore All-Star. They qualified for the state tournament and had a preliminary game against Comherce High School, which is way out in Springfield. They won that game 8-0, and then they advanced to Danvers and lost 2-0. Coach Hendy is retiring after 35 seasons coaching girls soccer here at Wilmington High School. I believe she retired from teaching three or four years ago and 324 wins. So, quite a career there and quite a send-off for Coach Hendy. Field hockey. Field hockey finished with a record of 5, 12, and 1. Head coaches Leann Ebert, JV coaches Laura Connors. Assistant is Katherine McKenna. Abigail Hassel was a Junior All-Star. Ava DeFiorio was a Junior All-Star, and Karina O'Donnell was a Senior All-Star. The girls made it to the, qualified for the state tournament and in the preliminary. They hosted East Bridgewater, and it was one of the most amazing games I've ever seen. It went three overtimes with no score, and then it went to a shootout in field hockey, and they won by 1. It was pretty amazing to watch. They moved on to Gloucester, and they lost 4-1. That ended their season. The golf team, they finished their season with a 0-11 record. Head coach Steve Lynch, who's also retiring. They had a league All-Star, Patrick Stokes, who's also a senior. Girls volleyball here. Great picture here. They do a dig kink night where they raise a ton of money. They finished with a 4-16 record. Head coaches Lauren Futch, Donahue, JV coach Madison Burke, JVB coach Heather Losley. Maddie McCarron was their lone All-Star, a senior, who I believe is continuing to play at Endicott next year. Boys cross-country coached by Coach Patron, the birthday boy. They finished with a 2-4 record. Assistant coach Brian Shepherd, and Dean Champa was the Senior All-Star for the boys' The football team had an overall record of 2-10. Pictured here is Coach Craig Turner. This picture took place when they played at Borrica. The game was at 7 o'clock. I think 2 o'clock that morning, Coach Turner gave birth to his second child, and it was just a wild and emotional day. Coach Turner is originally from Borrica, so at the end of this game, the coaching staff and whole team from Borrica came up to the coach and the team and presented him with a game ball for his newborn son. It was quite a nice moment, very surreal and very, you know, it was non-scripted. It was just nice to kind of see it developing. His assistant coaches are Thomas Shield, Sean Turner, Raleigh Hinkle, and Charlie Turner. He had two All-Stars, Dempsey Murphy, a junior, and Michael Lawler, a junior. We had two National Letter of Intent signings that we'd like to highlight. One was Tiffany Smith, who was part of the cheer team. She signed her NLI to attend Quinnipiac University to be a member of the Acrobat and Tumbling Team. Here we have a picture with Tiffany, her parents, her family, her coaches, some teachers and friends in there. And we also had Nate Aliberty to sign his National Letter of Intent to go to St. Aslam's College for Menzil Cross, and here's a picture of Nate, his parents, and his teammates. We had a third one that we could not, we have a girl who actually doesn't play for, we don't have a fencing team, but she plays on a club fencing team, and she got a Division I scholarship to Temple. She's having a tough time organizing all of her people, and she wants to have some gear there as well. So, at some point, we will be recognizing her, but we have not forgotten about her. Also, something that happened this fall with athletics, there was an induction to the Hall of Fame. This is the picture here of the class of 2022. It's a rather large class. It's not normally this size, but the Hall of Fame Committee missed a cycle due to the pandemic, so they tried to make up for it by having twice the enrollment in the induction class. Pictured here are former Wilmington High School athletes with their graduation year, and we have one coach, Coach Mike Pimental, who also taught here for maybe 15 years in the phys ed department. Two back-to-back state championship hockey teams were recognized. I think between the two teams, we had like 35 to 45 of the players down there. So, it was a real nice night to celebrate all the special athletes and the teams. Okay, Willie the Wildcat. This is a good one. Willie the Wildcat has been popping into some of the schools. Here's a picture of Willie the Wildcat at the West Intermediate. Before becoming the interim athletic director, I was a PE teacher at the West, so Mr. Foster asked me if we could get Willie there for one of his assemblies. We had a student athlete captain, who's part of our captains academy, volunteer, and he did just such a great job. The little kids loved it. He gave tons of high fives. During the assembly, he was helping Dr. Foster pass out pencils and, you know, wristbands and all this other stuff. It was a successful hit, and if there's anybody watching, any of the principals, Willie the Wildcat is available to come visit your school and help out with anything that you need. It was a nice way to promote athletics and kind of the town spirit, we thought. And I would get, in big time, you'd get called to the principal's office tomorrow morning if I did not drop our roll cats. We will have a winter store available for anyone who's interested for some Wildcat gear. At the beginning of each season, some of the teams have their own store with team-specific stuff, so we wanted to kind of give them their own time, and then once that's done, we were going to open up a department-wide store with some gear if anyone's interested. Up here is posted my Twitter and my Instagram with my email. I'm always available if anybody needs anything or has any questions, and that is your 2022 Fall Review.
Thank you very, very much. Questions, comments?
I have to say, I'm so very proud of all the teams and the athletes and very grateful to the coaches to dedicate their time to enrich our student athletes in teamwork, and it's not always about success, it's the lessons learned in defeat that make you successful. And I'm so sincerely grateful for the investment in our student athletes and for our student athletes for never giving up and persevering. I do have to say that I, I know I have my own personal, I do love the inclusion of the Hall of Famers being inducted. That has never been presented to us before in that, and I think it's just so rewarding, and they should be recognized. I just got inducted into my high school through my girls' basketball team, so it's still a little surreal, but anyway, but I just, I think it's a legacy, and it's a Wildcat legacy. There are always, they will always be Wildcats no matter wherever, where they go in this world. And I think those lessons learned in that time of your life, which you're learning and grasping now, will carry you into your adulthood. And I just, I just, I think that's a great addition to your report. And lastly, I had just a quick question. How many teams do we currently have that are on waivers with 8th graders?
Waivers, so in the past, in this fall season that just wrapped up, we had the golf team, and we had field hockey and girls' cross-country. The way that the waivers work for the middle school is it's purely based on numbers. So, it's kind of like a scramble, because we have our sign-ups, and then we have our league meetings, and we bring it to the league, and it has to be voted on by the league first. Once it's voted on by the league, I contact the chairperson of the school committee, the superintendent, and the principal of the high school and the middle school, since it's that building, and it's purely based on numbers. Then it goes to a district, and they just approve it.
Okay. So, do you, have you found in your time, if you can answer it. If you can't, that's perfectly fine. Are we having, are we finding more need in getting waivers to build our high school teams?
Yeah, I would say so. So, our numbers, obviously, we know the situation with our enrollment, and that has a direct correlation to athletics, right? If you have less kids, you're going to have less kids doing specific events and athletics. So, yeah, we have seen an uprise in it, and sometimes we have not been able to offer a third team, whether it's a JVB team or a freshman team, because we haven't had enough numbers. And it's not just a Wilmington problem or a Wilmington issue, more or less. It happens across the league and across the state, where waivers for middle school are becoming more and more popular.
Very good. Thank you so very much.
Congratulations on the Hall of Fame.
Thank you.
The Hall of Fame Committee, it's funny you brought up the legacy, is one of their major projects that we're working on, is trying to create a legacy wall somewhere in the athletic wing.
Really?
Where athletics, where the Wildcats can be remembered forever, like you said.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just congratulations to all of our student athletes. I think it's remarkable how, what kids learn by being on an athletic team, learning how to manage your time and to work hard and to stay focused. And a thank you to all of our coaches, because, you know, I don't think we, I think we don't realize how much of an influence our coaches have on our children and what positive role models that they are in our kids' lives. So, thank you to all of our coaches, and thank you to all of our students for being such hard-working kids and representatives of our town.
Thank you very, very much for being here. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. It's nice to see all your smiling faces, and happy birthday, Coach Patron. All right, thanks, everybody. We can give them a round of applause. Of course, you can stay. I always like to say, you can stay.
For two hours.
Our next item of business, we have our PAC presentation from the Wildwood PAC, led by Kelly Peterson. Hello, and others.
Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for having us. I can confirm that Willie the Wildcat was at West, because it was early September, and I've spent every morning telling my daughter he will not be there that day since, because she thinks he's mean. Don't tell her. Okay. Thank you all so much for having us. As Jen said, I'm Kelly Peterson. I have a five-year-old daughter, Hadley, at the West with Mrs. Hollerin, and I decided that a full-time job, three kids under five, and two dogs and a house weren't enough. So, let's add one more thing to the list. So, here I am, I'm a co-president this year of our PAC. This is Katherine Camo. She is a fellow co-president. Her daughter Anna is at the Shawshin. This is Michelle Scarselli. She's a co-treasurer. Her son Anthony is at Woburn Street. And we also have three other members of our leadership team, Melanie Versteeg. Her daughter is Riley. She's at Woburn Street. She's a co-treasurer. And then our two co-secretaries are Shelby Brand and Nagwa Rabadi. Shelby's daughter is at West. Nagwa's son is at Woburn Street. So, we like that we adequately represent students at all three locations. It worked out very well. And all of us, this is our first child entering the Wilmington school system, so we're all first timers here. So, when we got together for our first meeting as a leadership team, we decided to kind of talk about and brainstorm what our mission would be this year. So, I think you could take a really shallow look at an organization like PAC and say, "Let's fundraise money, and then let's buy whatever the staff and the admin tell us to." But we wanted to have a little bit more of a purpose. So, our mission, and this is also partly derived from our bylaws, but it's to enrich the educational experience of both our students and staff, so teachers and admin, and probably more important than ever for the Wildwood, we want to cultivate a sense of community. So, we took that mission, and we identified three key initiatives for the year, and these are kind of the guiding pillars of why we're doing what we're doing. So, student enrichment, teacher appreciation, and then ultimately to foster community. That's what our goal is for the year. So, I will just kind of talk you through how we're doing this. First and foremost, we're working really closely with Principal Bissell to identify ways that we can enhance and enrich the educational experience of our kids. And we want to offer activities for the kids that are fun, but perhaps more importantly, we want to support the existing curriculum. As a first-time mom, when I was introduced to the kindergarten curriculum, I realized it's a lot. It's, you don't go to kindergarten to play anymore. That's what I did, but my daughter's reading to me now. So, we didn't want to make life harder for our teachers, so we're always trying to think about what can we do that will support what they're doing without getting in the way of all of the tasks that they have to check off their list. And we've tried to prioritize enrichment opportunities that will directly address the challenges that have been presented to us as a result of the separation of our students. So, just to name a few things to date, in September, I don't know if everyone here knows, but the children at West don't have a play structure. They don't have a playground like they did at the Wildwood. The Shawshin and Woburn Street kids are lucky. They do have play structures. So, to kind of supplement that and to make it a little bit more equitable for the kids there, we purchased a sandbox that we installed for the kids at West. Kath and I put our husbands up to doing it on a Saturday. They were more than thrilled. But my daughter says the kids love it. We're happy that we could have contributed one little thing to kind of make their recess time a little more fun, because they don't get that much playtime, as I already said. So, we tried to make it good for them. In October, we sponsored a Halloween art event or activity, and also an estimation activity. So, we had held a trick-or-treat community event that I will talk about in a few minutes, and we had extra candy, so we packaged it up into containers, and we gave it to the classrooms so they could practice their estimation. And we also got a donation from McKinnons of 200 small pumpkins that we were able to give to all of the classrooms, along with some decoration supplies, and it sounds like it was a big hit. We have a cute picture of the kids on this deck decorating their pumpkins. In November, we received several requests from classrooms to donate baby wipes. I think they're used to having sinks in their classrooms, and they don't all have those now, so baby wipes are in need and in demand. So, we donated boxes of baby wipes. We donated Play-Doh to teachers who requested it to use for mindfulness activities. And we also donated a Bluetooth speaker to the gym teacher, because going from location to location, they needed something easy to transport that would also help make their classes more effective. And in December, we have planned a gingerbread magnet activity that we think the kids will enjoy, and it'll be pretty easy for the teachers to oversee. Teacher appreciation. So, you know, as first-time parents of kids in the school system, we are so grateful to these teachers who we're just giving our kids due for a day. They are the safe place for our kids now that we were for the last five years. So, this is really important to us, and we recognize the toll that the current physical separation can take on staff camaraderie, staff morale. They've been displaced from classrooms that some of them have taught in for years and years. And our students rely on these teachers to succeed, and they've demonstrated an unwavering commitment to our kids despite any challenges that they're currently faced with. So, we really think it's our duty as a PAC to show our teachers that we appreciate them, we're grateful for all that they do, and their efforts are not going unnoticed. So, in the fall, there was a teacher luncheon. It was November 8th, and we sponsored it. So, it was actually a teacher conference or...
Training day.
Training day. So, we decided to buy them lunch. So, we had it catered. A local business in town worked with us, and we provided lunch. We gave them a choice of what they could order. We also organized a kind of like a small drive among Wildwood parents of homemade desserts, so a lot of people stepped up. They baked for it. It was really cute, so we had a really big dessert bar. And then we did a pie and cookie dough fundraiser. So, we decided as a PAC to purchase either one pie or one box of cookie dough for each teacher and administrator, so that they could have a little something for Thanksgiving, and it was just a tangible way that we could show our thanks to them. This winter, we have invited teachers and staff to join us, so we organized a kid meetup at Zulights for this coming Saturday. Michelle was able to procure a discounted rate for families, so we invited the teachers and staff to join us at that. We thought, we got cheap tickets, and it would be a nice thing for them to do with their families, too, so they'll be joining a pretty large group of Wildwood families. And we've also procured some gift cards to get coffee that we'll be distributing to them at a later date. The picture on the right makes me laugh, because we, for our pie fundraiser, we used my house to do the distribution, and I got like 450 pies dropped off on a Monday, and I didn't tell my husband exactly. And I didn't tell him that people would be coming in and out for five hours to pick up. So, he sent me this picture from our security camera and said, "Do you know what's going on?" But it made me happy. There's a mix of teachers and parents, and it just made me happy. He's usually on board for my crazy ideas.
Does he have a choice?
He has no choice. Exactly.
It's nice that you make him.
It's nice that you make him think, though. That he does.
Exactly. Okay, so, our, our third initiative for the year is to foster community. And distance usually makes the heart grow fonder, but we're dealing with five and six-year-olds. So, we don't want them to feel that distance too much. So, being spread across three different locations, we view it as our job to bring them together as much as we can to really foster that sense of community. They're all going to be back together in school next year, so it's important that they get to know each other, and they play with each other, and they expand their friendships and, and meet more people. And in ways, we think of this as our most important goal of the year. So, Michelle spearheaded a kind of internal campaign that we're sharing with the families where we, we are Wildwood Strong. So, part of this initiative was to do a swag sale where we are offering clothing and other items to our, our kids and our teachers and families. A lot of them are branded with the Wildwood Strong logo, which we thought was pretty cool. There's also more generic Wildwood and Wilmington items, but we think it'll be really nice to see people around the community in this branded gear to show that we may not be together, but we, we are in spirit. I skipped ahead a little bit. That was a, a big initiative in November. Back in September, I think it was the very first weekend after the school year started, we organized a playground meetup at Rotary Park. It was super simple. We just said, "Come at 10." And the kids came, and they had a blast. So, we did it again in October, and we had fundraised some money by then, so we were able to purchase some candy, and we had the kids come in their costumes, and we did a little parade around Rotary Park Lake, and the kids trick-or-treated, and it was really cute. And I want to say attendance about doubled from September to October, which was really promising. And then for Zulights, Michelle got in trouble because we sold so many tickets at this discounted rate that they said, "We can't even accommodate this." So, we actually had to stagger the start time because we...
How many tickets sold?
There's 150 people going.
Yeah, so, it's really exciting. It shows us that people are being receptive to the activities that are being planned and the things that we're doing. For January, we decided enough for the kids. We've done enough for them. We are going to Trey Mezzo, and we are going to have a parents' night out with a DJ who's going to do some sort of a bingo game, and we're going to have a cash bar and pizza, and it's going to be really fun. So, we will, we're not looking at that as a fundraiser, but we're also not going to turn down anyone who wants to give us money. So, we may collect some donations there, but the ticket prices will probably just cover the cost, and we may, we may do something in, in the form of fundraiser, especially if there's a cash bar, but TBD. And then February, we're going to organize a family fun night. We're thinking around Valentine's Day. We'll do some sort of friendship event. We'll invite all of the, the families, the kids, teachers, whoever wants to come. Hopefully, we can hold it in a gym or, or somewhere central in town, and more details to come on that. Just a brief overview of our fundraising efforts. So, we have ongoing passive fundraising throughout the year. So, direct donations, if anyone wants to donate, that is a QR code to get to our PayPal page. That's how we're taking donations. We also are utilizing Amazon Smile, which is great. I don't know if anyone's ever used that, but you basically just link your organization to your Amazon account, and every time you make a purchase, it, a small percentage of it goes right to the PAC or to whatever the charitable organization is. So, that's been great. Box Tops and Mabel's Labels are two others that are running constantly. Our first and really most successful fundraiser was our Pie and Cookie Dough fundraiser. So, we managed to raise in profit for the PAC over $4,000, which was really big for us. I don't think that, in the past, I don't think that more than $5,000 has been raised for an entire year. So, getting $4,000 from one fundraiser was, was a really big deal, and we were really grateful for that. Coming up, we, we're going to partner up with Habit Burger in town. They offered us an opportunity to do an event where a portion of the proceeds earned within a certain amount of time on a certain day will be donated to us. So, we don't have a date yet, but more to come there. And then we're planning on doing some sort of silent online auction in probably February. Connect with us. We meet every single month on the second Monday of the month. It's via Zoom at 7:00 PM. Principal Bissell sends out a link to the Zoom meeting in her Wildwood weekly newsletter. We also post it on our Facebook page, so if you wanted to follow us on Facebook, you can get more information there. And also, if you ever wanted more information or to get involved, send us an email at wildwoodpac@gmail.com. Reach out to us directly. We're always willing to chat. And we're always looking for new ideas, so new fundraising ideas, activity ideas, anything that anyone has in mind, we are open to. And that's it. Are there any questions for us about anything we're doing or anything I said?
Great. I mean, this is so helpful for us to hear from you, and, and we're so excited, and thank you for taking this on, especially spread across the three buildings. I think it's really important that you're helping to keep everyone connected. So, we're appreciative of your time and for sharing that with us. Questions or comments, Mrs. Burns?
I have to say that I'm, I'm just in awe of the work that you've done and the time I know that goes into each of these activities, how so creative to support the, the teachers and the students across several buildings. And I just, I, I'm just elated with the outside-of-the-box type of thinking, how do we solve this problem in order to keep our little community? And, and I, I'm just in awe, and I, I thank you for investing in our staff and especially in all of students, and the support from the parents, advisory councils are, are, are really make a difference. I, I know that they, they truly make a difference, and I thank you for your time invested in this.
Thank you for being here. Thanks for sharing this.
If I could, yeah, and thank you for being here. I, I met with Ms. Bissell yesterday as part of my regular visits with principals, and I actually thought the number was more than 150 tickets. So, I hope that you don't have more. But, but, but in all honesty, what she, it was clear how appreciative she was and is of your efforts, and that it is paying a difference, and it's being felt. This, it wasn't even about this presentation tonight or your, or your presence here, but she made a couple of comments about the, the impact that you are having on, on the staff in a very positive way. So, you know, the work of, of, of schools couldn't happen without the partnership of community members, and that holds true any time period, but certainly in times like these. So, thank you for rising above and beyond to help support and, and, and keep the staff going, because I know you're, you're clearly making a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item of business, we have approval, approval of items by consensus. Approval of minutes, November 16th, 2022. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Turner. All in favor? That's unanimous. Warrants G15, 16, 17, R17, 18, 19, L40, 41, 42, 43, 44, and FS24, 25, 26, and 27. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Second, Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? That's unanimous. Payrolls ending 11/23/2022 and 12/7/2022. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Flowman, seconded by Mr. Sumaha. All in favor? That's unanimous. And sped 19, 20, and 21. Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Sumaha. All in favor? And that's one extension. All right, that brings us to our superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you. Just one evening, one item, sorry, this evening, and I'll turn it over to the gentleman on my left.
Good evening. Thank you. In your packet was our FY '22 and year-end report. As I've mentioned, every year, all, all school districts have to send our elementary and secondary education report that identifies essentially every penny that comes into and goes out of the district. So, in your packet is just a copy of that. It's pretty luminous, and if you go to my office, there's three minds worth of information that backs up the numbers in the reply.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments? Mr. Fenely?
Paul, if I could, as I often do, anything that jumped out as weird or unexpected or pretty standard and what you would expect?
Yeah, no, yeah, just similar to every year, just a lot of work and a lot of info.
Oh, on each item? Sorry, sideways.
Melissa, do you want this? I have to print it out.
It's okay. I just, I wanted to understand where it says some of the numbers. So, like, at the top of the columns, it'll say School Committee, and then like 1410. What does that represent?
That could be just a column number.
Okay.
So, there's instructions, and certain expenditures have to go into certain columns if, if I'm understanding your question right. So, it'll, it could say, if that's what you mean, like, at the top, it says 14, and then below it, there's a whole bunch of numbers or...
Yes, it's the ones that are always in parentheses. No.
This word says row line, or am I in the wrong place?
No.
Okay, sorry, I was trying to help.
I'll ask you, I can ask you offline, too.
Yeah, but typically, the top of each page has a column number, and below it, it might have a description of what's in that column, if that's, or you can, we can talk...
That's just for like your purposes of knowing?
Yeah, it, it's actually probably part of the report.
Okay.
It's a physical Excel spreadsheet that has to be filled out. All those numbers are manually entered. The majority of them are manually entered. Some are automatically entered by Desi, but for the most part, they're entered by me.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Our next item of business, we have new business, and one item tonight, Planning for Student Needs Special Education. This is a presentation, I think by...
Yes.
Brown, do you want to introduce?
Sure, I will. Thank you, as they're coming forward. Tonight, we have our Director of Student Support Services, Alz Alagrand, and our Coordinator of Special Education, Sula Abousias, who's here tonight. And just some sort of context and setup for this, you know, a, as you know, we are heading into, well, we are really in the budget planning season, and as you know, we have two really important upcoming budget presentations planned, December 21st here for the preliminary budget, and then the recommended budget in the new year. We, we thought that it would be important, it's, and timely, to take a little bit of a different tact or approach here and provide a little bit more of a comprehensive overview of Student Support Services specifically, and really a snapshot of the realities that as a district, like so many others, are facing right now. This is, it's, it's connected certainly to budget and budget planning, but I think also more importantly provides you as a committee and our community with an update on some of the many challenges that we are continuing to face coming out of the pandemic. And so, tonight, as opposed to incorporating this into the budget presentation, for example, next week, we thought that it might be more appropriate to spend a little bit more time on this as a somewhat of a standalone topic and provide you with an opportunity to also perhaps ask more questions if you have. So, with that, thank you, ladies, for being here tonight.
Thank you for having us. It's been a while. So, we're going to do kind of an interesting kind of start. We're going to talk a little bit about the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which I know many of you are familiar with. I think sometimes we only think of it as it relates to school-age kiddos, and so I'd like to just talk a little bit about early intervention, which we've never really talked about at School Committee as long as I've been here. And I'll explain kind of why as we go along, if that's okay. And then we're going to talk about strides programming as it's connected to early inter- oop, thank you. And then where we're heading in terms of the district needs. So, typically, when we've done presentations in the past around programming in the district, it's in response to what we're seeing in the community. So, we're going to, in terms of what a need might be. So, that's really why we're starting with IDEA, if that makes sense. So, I know all of you kind of know IDEA. It's the law that makes available education services, related services for children with disabilities, you know, started in 1975, reauthorized in 2004 to provide really more access to the services that are appropriate within the school district, as well as they changed some provisions of it. But it covers also infants and toddlers, which I think people don't typically think of. And kind of, we, our responsibility when a child is aging out of early intervention would be aging in at age three into the school district. The Massachusetts law kind of that's related, people typically are the older people in the room, myself included. Think of Chapter 766. It's actually Chapter 71B. So, there's really four parts to IDEA. The first is kind of what people think of as the regulations related to the law. So, Part A governs kind of the provisions, the timelines, all of the components of how to access services for kiddos, kind of the more regulations when you think of it. B is what we typically think of as a public schools. It relates to covering students from ages three to 21, and the specifics regarding evaluation timelines in there. What is the law regarding, the federal law, right? Massachusetts has different laws regarding timelines for kids that are school age and what, how that relates to least restrictive environment. The Part C, which we'll talk about in a second, covers birth to age 36 months or age three. The last part is where we get our funding from. So, the 240 grant, that is our, the only really grant that we have for special ed services in the district, as well as research for institutions in the country, and funding through the government for those institutions comes out of the IDEA Part D. So, Part C, just going to back up for one second, covers kiddos that might develop a delay or born with a delay that might require services. They receive those services not under what we would typically think of as an IEP. They receive it under an Individual Family Services Plan. So, the plan is written, might, services might be delivered in the home, might be delivered in a center, daycare center, Head Start Center. And it covers that child from whenever they're eligible. For some kids, it's immediately following birth, depending on their birth circumstances, through the point at which they turn three. And I think I'm going to turn it over to Sula to talk about what our process is and then how they come to us, if that's okay.
Yep. Hi, everyone.
And welcome.
Thank you. And so, we thought it was appropriate to kind of go over a little bit of what that process is that occurs when early intervention sends over their referrals, the upcoming referrals or pending referrals to the Special Education Department through the district. And so, students who receive early intervention or are suspected of, of having a disability are referred to the district at around two and a half years of age. So, we get them ahead of time enough that we have time to sort of look at the profiles of the kiddos that are coming our way to be evaluated, and maybe kind of start to think about pre-planning for what services may come our way when those kids, when those kiddos age in. And so, typically, at around 2.8, so we'll hold that referral for a couple of months. At around 2.8, 2.9 years of age, we will initiate the referral and generate the evaluation consent home that we then send to families, which really seeks their written consent for us to move forward with completing the assessments that are listed based on the information that early intervention provides to us about the needs of the students and whatever services they may have accessed in EI. So, for eligible students, the district is responsible for ensuring, for ensuring that an IEP is in place by their third birthday. And so, our timeline kind of aligns with that. And so, before their third birthday, typically, there is the eligibility meeting through Special Education has occurred, and a student is then found eligible for services, whether that's related services only, sometimes maybe communication is the only area that needs to be developed. Sometimes it's occupational therapy for fine motor skills or physical therapy. Other times, we kind of see sort of more general delays that kind of go across different areas. And so, in those cases, the recommendation would be a little bit more substantive in that teams would recommend pre-K integrated programs. So, programs where special ed students are present alongside their Gen Ed peer models. Typically, I believe in this district, that happens through a lottery system for the Gen Ed peers, but really, pre-K programs exist for our special ed pre-K students, three to five or three to until they enter kindergarten. So, the, some of the recent trends that we have seen, and we'll go a little bit about more of the specific numbers that we are seeing, is that we are really seeing a significant increase in all early intervention referrals, whether it's maybe one particular area, typically communication, where kids are not really developing their expressive language skills as, as expected, as developmentally expected. And we're also seeing a significant increase in numbers with students who are coming in with either a diagnosis of autism or a profile that maybe leads us to believe that that could be an area that we will be looking at. And then, you know, for some of our ASD kiddos who are coming in with significant disabilities, that then leads us to increased special ed... that then leads us to increased specialized programming for them. So, you know, we, we do have the opportunity to kind of think ahead as we're getting those referrals to kind of gauge what kind of resources we are going to need when those students age in. So we thought it was important to give you a quick snapshot of what the numbers look like over the past couple of years in regards to early intervention referrals alone. So this is just EI referrals. We certainly have a whole number of parent referrals when students are four years old, four and a half, maybe three. Those are not accounted here. And we also have referrals through the IST process. So our gen ed peer models, who are part of those pre-K integrated classrooms, if, you know, we see that there may be an area of need that we are noticing, we will then try to put in some tiered interventions first within the classroom setting. And if those are not successful with that student, then the school will make a referral to special education on behalf of that student, with the parent, of course, knowing that this is sort of happening. And so going back to two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, we were able to gather that we had about nineteen early intervention referrals. Of those nineteen, fourteen students were found eligible for special education, whether it was just related services, speech, OTPT maybe. Of those fourteen, four were students who required strides programming, whether they had the ASD disability diagnosis or whether their delays were sort of developmental across the board, where they required that kind of programming. In two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we received fifteen referrals, so more or less the same. Seven of those fifteen were found eligible and then two required strides programming.
Remember, we closed two in twenty.
Yes, so we kind of left out that COVID year, just because evaluations were not really happening, you know, with the expected timeline. There were a lot of gaps in programming, in staffing, all those things. So the numbers that we had for that particular year are not really, they don't support sort of the typical trend for a particular year. So we skipped that year. We went to twenty-one, twenty-two last school year, and this is where we saw a jump in the referrals. So we had forty-four referrals through EI. Thirty-one of those forty-four were students who were found eligible for special education. And out of those thirty-one, eight students required strides programming, so the ABA methodology, which is, as you can see, that's a hu, it's double almost, a huge jump from years past. And so this year, we are continuing to kind of work through these referrals. We have had thirty-two as of eleven thirty. I think maybe I have received another seven since then, which are not accounted in these numbers. And so of these thirty-two, so far, we have found nine students eligible. But some of these thirty-two are still in the evaluation process, so we haven't gotten to that eligibility meeting yet. And so this number nine is as of today, or as of November thirtieth. Of those nine, two of the students have required strides programming and ABA methodology. Of the referrals that we have so far, those thirty-two, eight of those look like they may require more specialized programming, maybe strides, maybe integrated pre-K, but more or less a day program of some sort. We, we have that as an asterisk, because for a couple of those, okay, a couple of those students, the eligibility meeting has occurred and we have recommended strides programming, but the parents have not either responded or have not accepted our proposal. So as soon as they do, those students will go right into those classrooms. In some other occasions, we are just awaiting the eligibility process, you know, for that two point eight, two point nine time to come, so that we can send the evaluation consent and then the timeline can start. And for others, we're just, we've sent out the consent and we're just awaiting parent response. So, but we're thinking as of right now, that we have about eight potential students who may require just increased programming supports for their needs. So the way that the district responds for programming or recommendations for maybe additional support or maybe not requiring the supports that we have previously had is through the community need. So the district responds to student and family needs as they arise by providing a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. And least restrictive environment can mean different things for different students, depending on how they present, depending on the needs that they have. So we are lucky enough in this district to have a range of programs. So we have full inclusion programs, we have partial inclusion programs where, so full inclusion is, so maybe a quarter of their day is in a, in a separate setting or in a small group. Partial inclusion is a little bit more. And then we have our substantially separate programs, which are our strides programs, where the majority of a student's day is really in a self-contained classroom, working in that ABA discrete trial methodology, where they need, you know, one-to-one or maybe, you know, a smaller teacher to student ratio in order for that methodology to take place. Now, if the district does not have the option or the range of programs that we have been able to utilize so far, then the district needs to find a placement to meet the needs of those students. In most cases, that means that we are looking and seeking out of district placements where they're able to support the students with significant needs. And sometimes out of district placements are the least restrictive environment for those students. There's nothing less than that. And that's okay. Those students are still part of our community. They're still part of our department here. We follow them closely and we make sure and evaluate whenever the team meets or throughout the year, whether we can step down or maybe step up or maybe leave the same, whatever programming that student receives. So by developing programs, though, in the district, there's also an additional, you know, additional resources that sort of go along with that. And so for our strides programs, not only do we need to have qualified teachers and ed assistants, but we also need access to BCBA's that support that program. We also need access to speech and language pathologists who are trained to work with those students who have those significant communication, expressive, receptive language needs. And so, you know, in this, in this district, we have that. And I, you know, this need is really the area for us where we see a lot of growth and we, we have a lot of more referrals for those types of profiles for students.
So I think, you know, a couple of years ago, I was probably sitting here and we were talking about kind of a different profile of students. And we were really talking about building up our social emotional programs in the district. And I think we've done that. We've done a really good job with that. We have programs pre-K through twelve. We also have strides programming, pre-K through twelve. And I think, you know, our development of those programs was directly in response to what we were seeing in the community. Then pre-pandemic, post-pandemic obviously changed that dramatically. But I think, you know, Sula and I's intention of kind of presenting tonight was and is to talk about not only what we're seeing, but, and I, I know that at one point last year, we talked a little bit about the rates of autism as well. You know, just, those are scary numbers, I think, when you look at them, right? Not that long ago, in two thousand, about one in a hundred and fifty births of, you know, rates, you would see a child diagnosed with autism. It's about one in forty-four currently. And, you know, the why of that, I think, is, is the question that I think everybody in the world at this point is probably asking. But I think we, you know, are definitely seeing the impact of that. And I'm not sure what degree the pandemic also played in some of what we're seeing with all of our kiddos across the board. The strides program is exactly the program for the kiddos that require more, that they require more intensive services. They require ABA methodology, which is a very specific type of educational methodology for students to learn skills in a very discreet way and then learn how to generalize those skills across, you know, not only settings, but also just within their classroom. And the programming does require more than what your average class would be able to provide for more of these, for these students. I do know, Sula and I kind of belong to, as many of us do, other groups with other people that are similar jobs as us, so job alikes. And this is happening everywhere at the moment, that the early intervention, a group of kids that are aging out of early intervention, the rates of kids that are diagnosed with autism, that have pretty significant needs across the board, is climbing and is a number of districts struggling. A number of districts don't even have pre-K programs for kiddos that have this and are even looking at spots in other districts. So, you know, I think that this is something that's not just us, unfortunately, that are struggling with. So our budget proposal, oops, thanks, is, so why are we adding it to Shawshene is the question that I'm sure. So what we're seeing at the, at this point is the kiddos that are aging in over the last couple of years. We now have a very large group of kiddos that are leaving kindergarten and entering first grade. We already have a strides classroom at the Shawshene. It's impossible to combine the six, possibly seven, but six for sure kiddos that are going from kindergarten into the existing program at the Shawshene. It's just not doable to have thirteen or fourteen kiddos with this level of need in the classroom. It's also not legal. But aside from that, it's not good practice. Either kids with this level of need require more, they require less student, a higher student to teacher ratio and really just require more services. We have, over the last couple of, so just to back up for one second, the, the other piece that we were able to do under one of the grants over the last couple of years, because the needs of the students in these programs really were very significant coming out of the pandemic, was we added, through one of the grants, four educational assistance to each of the programs, one at the Wildwood, one at the Shawshene, one at the West and one at the middle school. I'm gonna show you a chart in a second, which I'm sure you've taken a look at, looking at the programs that we've actually added already over the last couple of years, given in response to. So our current classrooms are, you know, number of classrooms, as far as I could go back, going almost back to two thousand, there's nobody really left that was here then. So it seems as though the two classrooms at the Wildwood have existed for a long time and then being one classroom kind of everywhere else. And I would say up until a couple of years ago, we, we had years where the numbers were maybe even low in one of those two classrooms at the beginning of the year and then we would have students age in. Couple of years ago, we started to see a significant increase. We had to add a number of classrooms. The current is that we have three classrooms at the Wildwood. We added a fourth classroom at the Boutwell at the start of this year. Add it, and then we have this, the current classrooms, one at the Shawshene West Middle School and High School. The proposed is to keep the current early childhood, because we think with the numbers of kids moving up and with the number of kids moving on, we should be okay at the early childhood center. But those students need somewhere to go at the Shawshene for next year. So I just, I've used this chart a couple of times, so, just to have a sense of the programs that have been added since I have been in the district or even the first year, I was actually in a different role. But in August of twenty-one, we had to add a Wildwood strides. We added the Boutwell strides this year and we're adding the Shawshene strides for the start of next year is the proposal. So cost analysis are difficult to do, because it never captures kind of everything necessarily. But, you know, when we're looking at students that are in our strides programming, they're typically, that are struggling or might require more, they are typically already in a full day placement in our district. They typically have a, you know, pretty low teacher to student ratio and they're receiving a tremendous amount of support in our programs. So generally, students that are in those programs, when they exit, they usually will exit not necessarily to a public day school, a collaborative. They will typically exit to something that's a little bit more, provides a little bit more support, which then also increases the tuition amount a little bit. So if you're looking at something like the May Center, Melmark, something like that, it's more money, which is typically where our students that exit strides go. You know, out of district, if you're looking at one student, it's about, currently about a hundred and five thousand a year. Going with a program that's the closest, it'd be about twenty thousand dollar per student busing. If we were to go with a program that was farther out, it would cost more. But, so the three-year cost just on one student is, is a lot of money. Never mind what we're looking at if we were to have to find another place for these students to go for next year. So I know the numbers are sometimes a little bit fuzzy, because there's, you know, built-in transportation costs. We have, obviously, transporting kids in district and there's service providers and such, but there is a cost benefit to it. And, you know, I, I think, for me, I have always felt very strongly, and I know Sula does too, that not all of our kids are perfect for all of our programs. Some kids need more and that's okay. But the ones that really we can house and service here and keep them connected to their community and their peers, it's important that we make the effort to do that. And I think you guys have certainly done that over the years with just the amount of programs that we've added. So, you know, I think that's what we're hoping to do here. The other thing we just kind of wanted to bring up, which is interesting, because I know we've talked a lot about enrollment. I don't know if I'm going over yet. Yeah, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So we, we started to keep track of the students or the families that are moving into our district and maybe what those families are requiring as far as special education services. So we kind of put this out a little bit on a graph, just to give a little bit of a visual. But last year, we had about a hundred and sixty-nine families move into the district from other towns or maybe other states. Of those, thirty-six were, were families with children with special education needs, which we kind of calculated to be about eighteen percent of those move in families. Of those thirty-six, four required out of district placements. They came to us with an IEP, a legal document that said this is what they need. So we needed to seek out those, those types of placements for them. And five of those required a substantially separate classroom, which we were able to, to provide with, within our, within our programs. This year, so far as of November twenty-one, we've had ninety-six families move in to the district. Of those, twenty-six have children with special education needs. Of those twenty-six, three have already required or have come into the district with out of district placements that we then needed to seek a placement and, and find an appropriate placement for them. And one of those students has required a substantially separate classroom for the strides, for our strides programming. So not only are we seeing an increase with our early intervention referrals and just the level of need is much more significant than in years past, but now we're also seeing a trend where families are moving in, maybe because we have programs. We often get, you know, a few phone calls throughout the year, we're thinking of moving and these are the towns that we're, we're moving, we're thinking about, and what programs does Wilmington have, because our children have these needs. Sometimes that's a reason why families decide to move to a particular town. And it looks like, especially for our strides ABA programs, we are certainly utilizing them for the families that are moving in, which is a great resource for us to have as a district. But it also sort of creates, you know, a greater need for us to continue to develop these programs and possibly expand, expand them.
So we just wanted to mention kind of ongoing challenges also related to this. You know, the amount of students, you know, if you take a look at kind of some of the DESI data that are being picked up for eligible for special education has increased significantly since the pandemic. I don't think we're necessarily seeing it in the same rates as some of the other districts are, but there's definitely an impact. I think some of the districts, like, you know, more of the urban districts are growing at a much higher rate of eligibility than we are, but we are definitely seeing an impact. You know, we talked a little bit last year about the rates of referral, the amount of kids that were being evaluated. That continues to be an issue. The, just the amount of turnover and staffing, I think, as all school districts are struggling with this, continue and making sure that we maintain compliance. It's better this year than it was last year, but the filling of positions coming post-pandemic was, was extremely challenging. You know, transportation, we continue to have shortages in bus drivers for some of our out-of-district kiddos and it's requiring some of the transportation companies to, you know, kind of group kids on buses and ends up having longer routes for kiddos to get what they need from school. And then I'm, I know that Glenn talked to this probably a while ago, but the state has given the out-of-district placements permission to go up to fourteen percent of an increase going into next year. I know some of the collaboratives have come out and said that they're not going to do quite that high, but we're anticipating most of them are going to take it. So it's gonna have a significant impact on all the districts, a fourteen percent increase in tuition. So questions? I do always just kind of put this up, oh, sorry. I do always just kind of put this up, oh, sorry, because I do think it's important. I love this report, for those of you that have ever, never had the opportunity to read it, I would take a look at it. It's Thomas Hare's report on the review of special ed in Massachusetts, talking about services that districts provide. And it's just a good, a little old at this point, but still a good report. Yes, go ahead.
Mrs. Plomin.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you for walking us through how things are looking right now. You know, I, I see there's a clear emphasis on our strides programming, but I'm also just a little curious about, given, you know, the state of mental health in kids. So, you know, not a developmental kind of lens that we're looking through, but more of a social emotional lens. How are our programs doing? Are we sort of busting at the seams with our social emotional programs as well? What is our process, I guess, for referrals into those programs? And are, you know, is there space in those programs? Are we struggling with that? What's the status of those?
We're okay with the social emotional programs at the moment. I would not add, I think we're kind of right where we need to be. So the process is actually the same, the special education process for those programs. So you go through eligibility, sometimes kids already have an IEP and they might be struggling. The team typically might reconvene or do additional assessments to determine what additional services a student might need. Programming could be an additional service. And the team makes the decision regarding those placement options for a kiddo, whether it's an in-district or an outside the district placement. We are lucky that we have programs, pre-K through twelve, social emotional programs, as well as the Bright program, which is not a special ed program at the high school, which is really for students that are exiting from a hospitalization or medical issues that need a kind of a soft re-entry into school. Because coming back can sometimes be very overwhelming and it gives them.
The Bright just at the high school?
We do, just at the high school, yep. So I, I think we are at the moment right where we need to be with our social emotional programs. Which I, I have to be honest with you, if we were sitting here just post-pandemic, seeing what we were seeing in that very first year back, I was worried. But I, I think we've been able to put some additional supports in place, which I think we're going to talk about maybe at the next school committee meeting, I think Christine Murray and I, that have helped as well. Supports all kids, not just kids in programs in the district from a social emotional program.
Mrs. Plomin.
Can, because I, it's, thank you for the presentation. I, I do appreciate that. I know it's really, I know it's a very condensed presentation that many may, may not realize, but it is very condensed, which I thank you time-wise. But I want to, I'd like to ask you with the move-in, because it's, I know we, you started off the presentation with the referrals, which are important, but then we segwayed into the move-ins. I, two-part question. Where do you see for those moving into the district? Where the biggest hits are, are we talking about in the elementary area, the middle school area, or the high school area? Because I think it's really important with regards to the balance.
Yep.
Because it's, it's not like a, especially as we talk about budget, you know, and especially post-COVID. Those, as we've seen, the mental health and social emotional realm, it also impacts in the other developmentally challenged diverse learners that we have in our district. So I, I'm just curious to see what, what you've been seeing with regards to the move-in aspect.
It's mostly elementary.
Mostly, okay.
Mostly elementary, yep. And I would say actually historically has been here, when we've gotten referrals, we get a handful maybe of, excuse me, of move-ins, of kiddos that are older, occasionally we get some middle school, but it is, it has been at least the last couple of years.
So Shawshene and U伯 Street, grade one to three typically.
I'm thinking, because we're all preparing for those COVID babies who haven't had those, that access to social things. So I worry that as we move forward, we will still see that fallout.
Yep.
I'm in that realm. But how, what's, what's the evaluation numbers like mid, like this time of year or mid-year? That is, that the department is seeing, because I think that's really relative with regards to mid-year services. Unanticipated that we provide, which every time we provide one or two or several services, it's, it's budget-wise, it's, it grows. Do you know what I mean? So I was just curious, what, maybe if this year may not be accurate, but it'd be interesting.
So so far this year, and this was as of December fifth. And again, we've gotten a whole bunch more since then. But we've had a hundred and nine referrals so far. And it's sort of balanced across town between the Wildwood, Boutwell, Shawshene, U伯 Street. It's sort of balanced, somehow it works out that way.
What about the West and North brackets?
In the West and the North. So those referrals tend not to be as heavy throughout the year. Typically, we get the referrals, you know, K, grade one, two, three. When kids are sort of learning to read, to do math, those are the skills that are sort of popping up when there are deficits. Then they slow down a little bit for grade four and five. Sometimes we see an increase in middle school and then it really drops off for our high school students. But so far this year, we have a hundred and nine. Last year, we had two hundred and seventeen within that year. But then we had an overflow from the year before where we weren't able to complete those assessments for a variety of different reasons. And those were forty-seven, so we had about, you know, two hundred and seventeen.
As they progress up through the grades, do you think the current intervention plans help balance that referral? Like the D cap, you know, as, I just, you know, just weighing that data and the effectiveness of those interventions with regards to the number of referrals that, that you're, you have to like act upon for formal evaluation?
I think the D cap is a very important document. I think it, you know, it really outlines.
Making sure it's being executed and that it's a supportive tool in this process.
Another positive and I think great resource that we have is our reading interventions and our math interventions through general ed and those are the screeners that are happening and the progress monitoring that takes place throughout the year. And so we are catching students earlier with their deficits and weaknesses in reading and math and providing those targeted interventions. Then we come back to the team, you know, and then maybe a referral will come to special education a little bit later on. But, you know, we are fortunate enough to have that, you know, multi-tiered support system in, in those young grades when, you know, those academic skills become really apparent when there's a deficit or a weakness there.
Thank you very much.
So just remember the referrals she's talking about are initial referrals. So there's, they're not recorded reevals or students that are on IEP that might be having additional. These are just initial evaluations.
Mr. Turner, sorry.
Thank you, just, thank you. First of all, thank you very much, very, very helpful and especially the way you explained it all. I think you just answered my question, but I want to make sure. So the thirty-two, for example, in this year is early intervention, so pre, pre-K age groups. And then the hundred and nine you mentioned would be anyone total, would be total, including, okay.
Yeah.
So we get more students entering the programs, or at least referred from the ages of four and five on in the first few years, as you said, as they're starting to engage with the teachers.
That's right.
Okay, so.
That's right. And so we have early intervention referrals, we have parent referrals, and then we have our instructional support team referrals. So there's a variety of sources for those.
And so that's part of where I was going for the community's benefit. These numbers are, are important numbers, but they're a portion of the overall picture for the entire program that we provide is a much larger group of students than these numbers reflect. Okay, cool, thank you.
So I ask my question, it might be a little bit about like asking you to predict the future. So I apologize if it's that.
That would be great.
But, you know, I'm thinking about how you were saying that you had these students at the Boutwell and the strides program and now we need to open up space in the Shawshene. So I'm thinking after the Shawshene, are you going to need to open up, you know, the West and then the Middle School and then the High School and continually increase? So I guess part of my question is, do you see, depending on the students, and I know it's, it's making a big generalization here, but based on students transitioning maybe out of strides and maybe transitioning into like a less restrictive placement or less restrictive services, do you see that happening for, like a kid that might need strides in K one, two, three? By the time they get to fourth grade, maybe they've gained some skills and they don't need.
It definitely happens. I mean, that's our goal for all of our kiddos. I would say the group of kiddos that we're seeing that is coming up do have a little bit more of a profound delays than I would say were typically the group that we would be seeing. I mean, when, when I first started, we would maybe have a couple of kids a year that ended up exiting early intervention in, in one of our programs. It's just, it's jumped significantly. The kiddos that we've, you know, we've had some kids move in that are age level from other states this year that clearly have an autism diagnosis, might have no language and are sitting in a gen ed classroom with no support, no IEP, kind of nothing that are coming from other places in the country. And I think, you know, we're lucky that we're in Massachusetts because we have, you know, a great education system that has things kind of in check. I don't think that's necessarily the case in some other portions of the country. And we're definitely seeing people flocking. I think it's a pattern kind of the Northeast in part for special education services for kids. So we've had a couple of those, which I never, I'm not sure that I ever saw that prior. A five or six-year-old with no language that clearly has an autism diagnosis with no services, sitting in a gen ed classroom, yeah.
So sometimes too, when we are getting those EI referrals or maybe a parent referral and it looks like a student may require ABA methodology, but we're not quite sure because maybe there's some conflicting information or maybe when we do our evaluations, maybe we see, you know, some signs of, you know, growth or potential growth. We oftentimes will come to the table, we will find the student eligible, but then may exercise to, you know, the process of extended evaluation into a strides program for forty days, kind of see how that student will engage with that programming, whether it's necessary, whether it's maybe not necessary. And then at that fortieth day, we will make a determination as a team whether that will continue to be the recommendation for placement or maybe we go to a less restrictive, which is our integrated pre-K. Other times we'll do the opposite. If we're not quite sure, we'll start with integrated pre-K. And then if it just, it doesn't look like it's working out very well, we then may do an extended eval or a placement into our strides program. So it's really hard because we don't know those kiddos that are coming in through EI. We only see them on a one-to-one or maybe an arena-style assessment. So we, we don't really know how they're going to engage with peers or with following directions. And so sometimes we struggle with the determinations following an eligibility. But we have the ability to do that because of our programs.
I have another question, I don't know, was somebody else?
I was going to, but please finish.
So it's, it's, it's a little bit different. So the, the cost analysis, I, I appreciate you sort of breaking down those numbers and really looking at the savings that we, as a district, you know, by spending money on additional classrooms, by spending money on additional teachers and, and, you know, educational assistance, we're actually reducing our, our costs from out-of-district placements. And the proposed, or I don't know if it's proposed or where it's going, that fourteen percent increase is going to significantly increase the costs to the district. And so I see adding more classrooms and more services that maybe there's ways of, maybe some kids are placed out of district now and those, those costs are going to go up. So maybe we should start to say, hey, what are some programs that we can do, you know, in-house, so to speak? So I, I guess it's not really a question, it's just sort of a comment that that, that increase is going to be, is going to play a huge role in like, you know, where special education is going.
Man, just, just to, you know, we should and will come back to that as part of the overall budget planning, but I think that what you're hitting upon is a really fundamental piece here that we have talked about and I know has been talked about at, at other meetings in terms of, you know, you saw the slide with the expansion of programs over the years. And I, and I remember very well when I was sort of preparing to come into this role and learning about the district, the level of out-of-district placements that it won, not that long ago that we had as a district. And I'm forgetting the number right now, but I think ninety, ninety-three. Now, certainly an argument can be made that our overall population has declined since that point in time and that's true. And certainly the argument can always be made that, you know, one year is not the same as the next, right? You can't compare apples to apples. However, the point is that now our out-of-district is, actually, no.
Sixty-two.
Thank you. So that comes about because of the program expansion, the building, the foundation that has been set to, as Alice was talking about, accommodate these students. But so too with that has had to come the additional staffing. So when we are talking about sort of an analysis of our overall enrollment, how does that align with staffing? It's a far more complex picture to sort of unpack than just a, a direct correlation. And that cost, you know, we, we sometimes have the internal dialogue around, is it, is it cost savings? Is it cost avoidance? You know, there's, there's a whole element to that as well too. And, but I think it's, you know, starting with where and when we can provide a program in district, we, we can and we should. And along with that is the maximization of, of, you know, limited economic resources that, that benefit the rest of our district as well. So something we'll come back to as well, you know, in future presentations, but.
Thank you. And I, and I think Jay and Glenn kind of touched on and may have answered it, but back to the, the budget slide here, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this, this hundred and five thousand per out-of-district is current fiscal year.
Right.
And that up to fourteen percent increase isn't reflected in this number?
No, it's not, yeah. I didn't want it to be fuzzy.
But whatever this number is, is going to be some version higher for next year.
Yep, they typically go up between three and five percent. We get the letters every year. I think one time that I can think of, Paul, we had a program that was struggling to go up six percent. We got a letter for that, at least that I can remember, which everybody was in an uproar over. So it's to be given a fourteen percent permission, essentially what was given by the state, is not something I've ever seen.
Authorized up to?
Up to fourteen percent.
Doesn't necessarily mean every program will go up that much, but they can.
Yep, and all the programs have increased their prices of their ancillary services over the last two years significantly. I know that they're all struggling with, most of them, the same thing, that all the public schools are struggling with in terms of staffing, retaining staff, paying them well so that they stay, you know? So I would not be surprised that.
Healthcare is struggling in the same way, which is direct, direct correlation, I think, to providers in that sense.
One thing over the years that I have always appreciated is the commitment of Wilmington to keep as many of our kids in district as possible. And we're, we're sort of focusing at the moment, because we all have budget on the mind, on some of the fiscal reasons for that. And certainly those, you know, that up to fourteen percent increase in the out-of-district tuitions, it's going to blow a hole in a lot of budgets. And so there's a lot of consternation, you know, in districts throughout the, throughout the Commonwealth. But I think one other thing that's also worth emphasizing is that it's, it not only saves us money, but it's much better for kids to be educated in district when possible. And obviously, it's not always possible. We can't, we don't have the capacity to do everything. There are kids who have needs that we can't meet. And that's why we have specialized, private special education schools available for those students. But when we can meet their needs, it is much better for them to be educated in district and to be part of our community and to have the socialization and the social experiences of our school system. And, and so it's, you know, the, the, the financial aspect is an important piece of it. But it's also worth noting that, that this is much better for the kids as well.
Yes, under the caveat, I would argue though, that we have to, we have to fund it adequately. Like we have to have adequate staff to be able to do that. We have to have appropriate facilities and equipment. And, and so I, you know, my mind is sort of fast-forwarding right now to like five or six, maybe, maybe hopefully not seven years when we have a new Wildwood school that will be housing the majority of our strides programs. And I think about what these classrooms really need to really meet these kids' needs because I've seen it, I've worked in it, and it's, they need a lot. And I, you know, I worry about, you know, the, some of the, you know, the current situations that we're in and how are we doing? And when people, you know, if people are questioning, like, do we really need a playground right now? Yes, we need a playground. We, we need a lot of things and we need to really be thinking about, you know, this has big implications on our budget process. And we really need to be thinking about what do the programs need in order to meet this growing demand that we face? Because yes, it, I totally agree that educating these kids in district is, is best as long as we are supporting it appropriately too.
To follow that, I do have a general question about the MSBA program. There are, there are aspects of it that, where the state has kind of guidelines as to how you build buildings. And as we're a district that tries to keep as many students in district as possible and some don't, does the MSB, MSBA program support the unique kinds of rooms that strides would need and those other sorts of programs need? So that we can still maintain it? Or would we have a change where we might have to say, well, we don't have the right spaces? Ideally, the new school is going to be much, much better for these things because it's much better spaces. And you can have an occupational therapy room that's built for the purpose and you can do those things. Do you know what I mean? Because what, like, as just as, as a silly example, MSBA has constraints on how big your auditorium can be. Which is just the way it works. But does it support the way we like, have preferred as a town to do, to provide special education?
Well, I, I think at the, at the foundational level, you know, the building of a new elementary school today, no matter the district you're in, will simply, will, will simply be designed very, very differently to support more intensive educational spaces. So that is to say, it's not going to be a cookie cutter, every room is the same size and you have to fit everything in. I will admit, I'm not exactly sure, certainly the, the enrollment is a driving force for the overall configuration of the building, the sizing of the building. But MSBA does know that there are unique programs from EL, Educational Learning Programs, to reading programs, to occupational therapy, and to these kind of programs that we're, we're highlighting here tonight, that will be factors of, into the overall design.
If I could just add something. I know in, when we did the high school, as we move along in the MSBA process, there's times where we have to develop an educational profile, a special education profile, if you will, in what our schools, the services our schools will provide. Now where it goes, I know in the high school, we, we did that. And it's part of the whole process. So I think as we go through the MSBA process, we'll have to outline, you know, the type of programs we have. And, you know, especially if, you know, if one of the options is a consolidated school, it's the programs that are within those consolidated schools. And then kind of go from there. But I know that there's a couple of pretty big exercises that a district has to go through to explain to the MSBA what our profile is and why we need these sort of things, where it goes.
I wasn't here for the high school, but, no, the high school being built, but if I go into the high school now, we, there was clearly a couple of rooms that were designed for the student populations that are in them. Very large handicap accessible bathrooms with changing tables, like they were designed that way. So I would anticipate we'd have some, certainly not my, you know, not exactly sure of the process. But clearly they did have a conversation with people that needed it.
Thank you very much for this and we look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is public comment. Mr. Raxdale?
Great. Yep, no, I'm good. So we have one person signed up for in-person public comment, Tracy Roy. And as a reminder, please state your name and address for the minutes and limit your comment, please, to three minutes, to three minutes.
Tracy Roy, 304 Woburn Street. I want to thank you, Dr. Brand and School Board for allowing me to speak today. Today I want to talk about a student need that is not being addressed, which is the health and safety of students in this district. After hearing multiple comments tonight about COVID being over, I'm not going to bother reading my stats regarding it. But just know that it's not over for everybody. So in addition to trying to mitigate COVID, there is also severe RSV outbreaks. They're wreaking havoc on children of all ages, which is unprecedented. And we also have in this state, overflowing pediatric wards and children being sent out of state for medical needs. This is something that our school district should be taking seriously. However, our school district includes a recorder module in the music program in the third grade in the winter during peak cold and flu season. I want to bring to your attention that Dr. Adam Squalhey, resident physician and NIH T32 Research Fellow, suggests that musicians should be empowered to make their own decisions based on their individual risk tolerance and leaders should be cautious in their representation of that risk. Our district is neither allowing for the assessment of individual risk tolerance nor being cautious about its representation of risk by refusing to allow parents to opt out or fulfill this requirement in another meaningful way. Dr. Squalhey also found that inexperienced wind instrument players, such as third-grade children, being introduced to a new instrument are more likely to have leakage of air and to work harder to reduce sound, both of which have been found to create more risk of aerosol production and thus increase, increase the spread of COVID and other viruses. These particles have been found to fill practice rooms and may take hours to settle. These children are practicing in their primary classrooms. So now, after they put their recorders away, they're all sitting in a room of aerosols. Despite this being considered a high-risk activity for COVID and RSV spread, our district is requiring all third graders to be exposed to this elevated risk. Many people fought to have a choice in how they mitigate risk based on their unique situations. I support that. Our school district, on the other hand, is not allowing families in this community to have any choice. There are no alternative arrangements or programs available for families who are concerned with the spread of this virus and the long-term impacts it has on the human body. We are uncomfortable with that risk for reasons that is nobody's business but our own. We appreciate that other families are comfortable with the program and we support their standpoint. But we have not received that same support or appreciation from this district. I want to keep my child in public school, but I need to make sure she is safe. This district has made it clear that the safety of the children in our school district is not a priority as they have been unwilling to seriously consider any of the several solutions I have proposed. The mission statement of our district is, "A school and community partnership that provides inclusive, respectful, and collaborative learning environment where all stakeholders are engaged in the development of the whole child." Yet, this has not been my experience. Instead, I have been met with nothing but resistance and unwillingness to find a suitable alternative. This district would rather fail a third grader than consider a reasonable alternative to fulfill this music requirement. I urge the school board to please consider the health and safety of its students and their families. Please find a safe alternative for families like mine so we can stay in public school, a human right that is guaranteed to all children in our country under the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to make a public comment? The committee also received several other written comments, which we have reviewed prior to the meeting.
Point of order. So, and I very much respect, and I certainly don't want to take away from Mrs. Roy's passionate speech. But I, I wanted to inquire that, and I think we digressed a little bit, that our public comments were supposed to be a gender-based public comment, commentaries with regards to things that we're talking about at our meetings on, on this sense. And I, I didn't know if policy, if we've altered our policy or if we, if the policy committee is considering something other. But I, I say this with the most respect, not to limit, but, but, because I think it's important to hear from families. But I, I do want to see that, you know, I do want to understand better that if that's our, a policy for public comments, I'd like to get back and fall into that policy again and uphold it and/or review, have it reviewed by the policy subcommittee because it's, it's a point out of, it's out of order. So I say that with the utmost respect and.
I'll bring that back. I'll forward that to the policy subcommittee, but thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is old business, and we're actually going to make a switch if that's okay. So I'm going to switch the school start time update proposal. Lisa is here with us, so we figured we would reorganize that. And then we'll do the Wildwood study options updates after. Is that okay with everybody? Great. Thank you. Good night, Alice. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Good night, Stola. Thank you very much.
Could we switch to the start time presentation, please?
Thank you. Nice to see you, Lisa.
You as well.
We're a little off our timestamp, so I thought.
That's okay.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for the flexibility in adjusting this. I know that you'll be up super early tomorrow, probably behind a wheel. So I appreciate that and, and certainly appreciate Ms. Frentzer's time, Ms. Regira's time, Ms. Elliott's time, Mr. Turner's time, as we've continued to work, work on this proposal and pleased to be able to provide you with what I think is, is, is an important update on this important topic. And so tonight, this presentation is included in the packet and it, it, it is all content that was included as part of the memo that was provided to the committee and available for the community. So through the presentation tonight, just again, sort of a, because this is the first time in a, in a little bit of time that we've talked about this issue, or this topic, rather, here, I thought to provide some background reminder, taking a look at the schedules as they are unfolding here and the proposed schedule as well as the current schedule, sort of break that new schedule proposal down for you and then highlight some of the feedback opportunities and where we go next as I see it in terms of options for, for you as a committee and us as, as administration. So as some reminder here, you'll recall that, you know, this, for those that are tuning in, for those who are maybe moved into Wildwood and sort of wondering where this whole discussion of start time and the change of start time is coming from, it emerged as an important part of our strategic plan a number of years ago. You all know the, the story that unfortunately, as a result of the pandemic, this particular initiative got sidetracked and sidelined and some starts and some stops, no pun intended, to, to get it to sort of a place to be able to really move it forward. I will continue to thank the many, many folks who rolled up their sleeves and wanted to be a part of this committee effort, but that certainly was impacted by the pandemic and so we've had to take a divergent path to get here. The, the discussion in May here in this room, as you'll recall, had a robust amount of data and feedback from our community that came forward on the start time topic and their proposal of changing it, as well as a number of options. And as you'll recall, it really became fairly clear that we had a, some degree of split in the community, not necessarily one particular option that was embraced or could be supported by all. And so as a committee, your request was to go back to take another look at the possibilities and to come back to you, which is where we are here tonight. I think it's, again, worthwhile, very worthwhile noting. And I know that I don't have to share this with Lisa, she's educated myself and our team about this, but I think I can hit all of the salient points that she would share. And that is, we have some real challenges here in Wilmington relative to trying to tinker or adjust to our start times. They include the number of schools that we have. They include the fact that we have to, Lisa has to design this model to assume that all students can ride the bus if they wish to. And that is a, and an important piece because of the fact that right now we do not ask families to contribute to that transportation service. And so the default position is to assume that every single student we have in our school district has to have a seat effectively on a bus. And, and so those, those are important components, the geography, the traffic patterns, all of those things play into this. But certainly the eight schools is a big, big piece. Five years from now, six years from now, if we are talking about a consolidated building, we're talking about a very, very different landscape and scenario. So I think that also as we get into this proposed new option, if you will, I think it's also front and center important to point out that this does not include any additional buses. We currently have 16 buses in the district that we operate, that Lisa oversees and plans for every single day. That operation exceeds a million dollars. It is supported by your budget, the school district's budget. And you will recall that through the many options that were profiled last, last year, there were a number of them that included additional buses. And there is no, no question that if we were talking about more buses, and this undoubtedly may be some of your questions and Lisa can expand upon this, but if we were talking about additional buses, the possibilities could be different here. However, you know, as, as, as an important piece to keep in mind here, we are planning for an approximation of $75,000 for every additional, every bus that's added. And as we will talk about more in two weeks' time, when we are here discussing the budget for fiscal year '24, I, I can tell you as a committee that the, the, the idea of adding to our transportation budget as we prepare for what is absolutely going to be, we believe, a very, very challenging year, just does not even seem to be in any way a possibility. Perhaps a different year, there's a different sense of this, but going forward into next year, the out-of-district tuition costs as one fundamental component of that. We'll talk more about that as the budget plan, but, and you, you know, undoubtedly may have some questions about that. And, and there's another piece here, just to kind of throw this all into more of a, a, a place of a new beginning, if you will, and that is time on learning. That through, as you know, as a committee, with your efforts and the administration's efforts in consultation with the Wilmington Teachers Association, we are adding instructional time to our school days across the board for, starting in the next fall, the 2023-24 school year. And when we were developing the options last year, this additional time could not be factored into those scenarios for the simple reason that we had not finalized that. By the end of last year, by the end of June, I think it was, when we, when we finalized the contract with the WTA, this was a very new but important piece that impacts all of this. So, you know, again, all of this is information for those that are looking for a little bit more. Is it included in the memo if you're interested in, in following this? But I thought we'd sort of cut to right to what we, what we, what we're looking at here right now. This is the current schedule in which we operate in the district. And the middle column, the middle column identifies the length of school days across the board. And on the far right-hand column is the translation of those length of days to the start time and end time across the district. This next, this next slide provides a highlight of what the new length of school day will be, starting in the fall of 2023. And, and so as an example, Wildwood right now, going back to the previous slide and Boutwell, five hours and 15 minutes. We've expanded the time, not the same across all levels, I should point out. More time is at the elementary level, 15 minutes, whereas at the secondary level, additional five minutes. But what this slide shows is the length of the school day in 2023. Regardless of any decision that you as a committee might make to change the start times, this will be the length of school day in the fall, as per the new contract that is in place. So again, if there's no, if there's no will or desire to change and realign our start times to support this effort, to specifically change the start times of our young adolescents, the adjusted schedule for the fall of 2023, with that additional instructional time, is highlighted in the third column from the left. And I'll let, and I'll let Lisa talk to this in just a little bit of a moment. Well, actually, let me pause here. This might be a good place for you to jump in. Can you kind of take us through why it is that these, these times have to change in, in response to adding the time?
So what research showed it was ideal for the secondary education to start school between 8:00 and 8:30. So that's our parameters, so I started there. Realistically, with our time on learning, to push to an 8:30 start time, it was going to have an enormous negative effect on athletics and after-school curriculars for our secondary education students with a closer to 3 o'clock out time. Buses wouldn't be available till. Buses wouldn't be available till 3:30, if not slightly after that, for athletics. Games wouldn't start till at the earliest 5:00, some even later, depending on amount of time needed to warm up for the sport. So with that parameter, we went, I went with the lower end, 8:00 AM, for the start time for the secondary and built from there. With our north, Woburn-Wildwood side, that is our largest geographical area that we need to cover. Those routes take longer because the Shawshene side is a small fraction of that particular side of town. Right now, for instance, in the morning, the time change between the Boutwell and the Wildwood, the buses are permitted 50 minutes to cross and cover the entire side of town and get back for Wildwood education. And they do that effortlessly. We don't have a ton of play with time, we don't have a lot of room, it's getting done, nobody's feeling rushed, but it's tight. So we kind of need essentially that 50-minute timeframe. With that, if we put Wildwood closer to an existing time, like right now where it starts at, you know, almost 9:00 AM, 8:50 AM, if we put it there, the buses do not have enough time to cover that side of town and drop off at the school. So we really want to push to start with that. Also, we currently use four Wildwood buses. With this particular time, I have all of the buses available because we're not aligned with any other schools. In the existing model, we have high school routes in Shawshene West, so the students go in with Shawshene West and they leave with the high school students. We're very limited on the amount of vehicles we can use for this particular school, but in the new model, I have all 16 vehicles essentially available. So I have more than four available to cover Wildwood in this particular scenario, so we can make routes a little bit shorter. Shawshene, again, with the transition from 8:00 AM to 8:25, we have a very small period of time, it's not enough time to cover the north and Woburn side of town. So we want to stay on the Shawshene side, smaller geographical area that we can accomplish in the 20 minutes. And essentially, I think I kind of covered all of them, so that's kind of why Woburn and north have been pushed to the last.
So...
We're going from, currently in our existing model, we have one, two, three, four, six, six tiers, and we're dropping down to that fifth tier. With high school and middle school going together at one particular time, based on our current registration system, we do not need additional vehicles, based on the number of students that are registered at this time to utilize the bus.
So that proposed schedule, again, captured in the memo, but highlighted here on that far right-hand column, I think as I said in my memo, I really believe after all of the time that, you know, has been able to be spent, sort of reexamining things and taking into consideration this extension of the instructional day, given the constraints that we have, I really do, we really believe this is the best that we can do without adding more buses, given the constraints that we have, and trying to align to that 8:00 hour as the feedback, the research point to, for our secondary-level students. It's certainly not perfect. I think the one caveat in that statement that I just made, as I highlighted in the memo, is that we absolutely do believe that it would be possible, the 7:40 hour for Wildwood is indeed, it reflects the largest change for any school from where we're at today. And I do want to acknowledge that completely. We can, we believe, if there's interest to align with this model or proposal, we can adjust that Wildwood time and push it ahead or back, I never know which way that is supposed to go, but, for example, say to 7:50, or some other number, with the understanding that everything else has to slide along with it. So if Wildwood is to be pushed closer to 8:00, it can be done. The very end of the day, if that's considered sort of one bookend, the very end of the day relative to when the high school would get out, I know the question will be, well, what about athletics? We have talked about that, we've thought about that, I've talked to Mr. Ingram, he also believes that there's the ability to get out and have students on the road 3:00 or a little bit after, and he's confident that that will be fine. So we can adjust this, but the understanding that everything has to slide with it. So just to, and then certainly open up to more questions. So the highlights of the new proposed schedule, so there's, just to be clear here, what we believe to be one proposed schedule that takes into account all of what I highlighted and talked about. When you take a look back at the feedback that, thanks to our partnership with PAAS last year, and thanks to the over 1,000 community members, community residents and staff who took that survey last spring, if you consider this proposal, that proposal that I just mentioned, and take a look at the highlights of the feedback here, first off, to be clear, this is an entirely new proposal, so if someone was, has been paying attention to this conversation, you will not find this proposal that's here before the committee in last year's presentation. We really believe, after the luxury of time to take a look at it, that it does align with really many of the top community priorities that were identified in the survey. It's indeed the case that no longer would it be necessary for any students to be picked up prior to 7:00, any students in the district. It does not, as Lisa said, require any additional buses. It does not impact in an adverse way athletics. It will certainly not impact CARES, that loud and clear concern around that and some of the other scenarios, some of the other proposals last year, as I'm sure you'll recall. I've had this conversation with Patty, we've, she's taken a look at this, she has seen these schedules, she understands the proposal. CARES would not be at risk here. Seven of our eight schools are shifted less than 40 minutes, if this were to be the proposal that were to be moved forward, and seven of the eight schools would have their start time within the 8:00 to 9:00 hour. So maybe best to pause there, and I'm not sure, Mr. Turner, Ms. Elliott, or anyone else, if you want to add to any of this, I know you've been partners in this, in this ride.
Yeah, no, I think you covered all of it. The main thing I would say is going back and looking at that survey, what were the parents' priorities? And this particular proposal aligns with all of the first five, six, seven of those priorities. And so I think with the review you did of the ridership and truly getting the precise grasp on what was possible, bringing the high school and middle school together, this does meet the request. Obviously, nothing's going to be perfect with eight schools. I mean, that's clear, but it does meet the request, it meets the priorities, and I think it's a viable option for sure. And, thank you.
So the proposal states further down that the, that middle school and high school students will be riding the same buses, that they'll be added together.
Yep.
If both schools are going to be starting at 8:00, how is that going to...
So in the morning, all schools have a 15-minute drop-off window, so students begin unloading 15 minutes prior to school starting. It's how we successfully go from the north and Woburn Street to the Shawshene West. So with that being said, we're going to see students starting to be dropped off at 7:45 for their 8:00 start, and the buses will have 15 minutes to cross over to the other school.
Is there one in particular that will be, I mean, is that just part of the routing that, like, the high school will go first and then the middle school?
Whatever's quickest, because the goal is certainly to have students out of bed as late as possible, to keep routes as short as possible, similar to what we've done with the middle school, we were able to raise the start time with that. So if a bus is coming from the north side of town, it's going to drop at the high school first and then head to the middle school. If it's coming from the Shawshene side, it's going to make the drop at the middle school and then head over to the high school. That's also going to help with traffic, so we don't have 16 vehicles that are 40 feet long, sitting on the bridge on 62 waiting to cross over. So they will be kind of split up geographically, depending on where they're coming from, who's going to make the drop first. And the same is going to go in the afternoon as well. So if a bus is crossing over to the north side of town, they may pick up the middle school students first and then head over to the high school or vice versa. There's a five-minute end time difference, so it does mean that some of the buses will be about 10 minutes late after this pickup time, after the end of school, getting over there to pick up the students.
With this new schedule, is there any concern with any students in the district being on the buses for longer than 40, 45 minutes?
Actually, no, not at all, because we're going to be using all 16 buses, it's no different than what our middle school students are doing now. So at our furthest point in town, which would be from the middle school, which would be the Andover Street neighborhood, those students went from a 6:20 pickup time to a 6:45 pickup time, that's when the first students picked up, and they're on the board of a bus for 30 minutes. So we're looking at about a 30-minute timeframe with the students on board.
I say that respectfully only because we're going later, so traffic patterns can be heavier during the times that we're doing pickup, which, I'm only thinking that the traffic patterns in this community is a little bit heavier than the six, you know what I mean? And I just, I think, because I'm in absolute support of doing start times, of moving forward with this, but I just want to ensure that we're not going to, and I know there'll be problem solving, there'll be tweaking along the way, but I just want to make sure that there's, we consistently can get our students to school within that 15-minute window and picked up, you know what I mean, accordingly, without...
Absolutely.
Extended delays, especially with the time of day. And traffic nowadays, though, too, in this community, I mean, I've seen the change over my 20 years here, but, you know, that's just a real, right, you know, it's just a real concern, I just want to make sure that we're set up in the perfect light to succeed.
Yes. So currently, and I know the middle school does start early, and as you said, you know, 8:00, traffic patterns certainly change. But right now, we have the earliest drop-off at the middle school at 7:05 for the 7:20 start, and I have buses rolling in, whichever ones can roll in the latest, some drop at 7:15, five minutes before school starts, if the bus has the time to do so. With that being said, in the 7:05 drop, they're still making their high school routes, which is very, very challenging, because these buses are crossing all the way back over, oftentimes to the Andover Street side, Andover Line, and still making it to the high school in time at 7:40. So I think we're going to see some challenges the first couple of weeks, as we always do, but it's certainly going to smooth itself out. We have a lot of car riders in the first couple of weeks of school, which creates an enormous traffic jam everywhere, until everybody starts putting their students on the bus again. Obviously, during construction times, just like we do now, we are going to experience some delays. I do, I do think this can work. We may have to make some tweaks here and there, but I do, I also think high school students are going to get better service, so they'll get more, closer service, because some of them certainly do have to walk quite a little bit to the bus stop. So they're going to have closer service. Walk zones for high school students will still remain the way they are now, and bus passes most certainly will be, need to be used for both the high school and middle school routes specifically, because there are students who are going to attend the middle school that don't qualify for transportation and high schoolers that do. So we need to be able to identify and make sure we keep those numbers very, very strict, because we do not have a large amount of space on these vehicles to essentially just be taking walkers on a rainy day, or, you know, something to that effect. So a bus pass system will most certainly have to be used for the secondary levels, just to ensure we don't have anybody on the bus that shouldn't be there, because we do not have the seats to accommodate.
So just a couple more slides, so the next steps here, you know, as a reminder for the committee and the community, start times does fall under one of the school committee policies, so it is my thought, I guess my recommendation, that this would be ultimately a decision that, as a committee, you would be asked to finalize. But with that said, in order to help sort of inform that final decision and a recommendation from myself, the thought here would be to take a little bit of a different approach than just that of a survey, and hold two community forums. One on December 21st, from 6:00 to 7:00, here in the Large Group Instruction Room, and that is, of course, prior to the December 21st regularly scheduled school committee. And then on January the 18th, also from 6:00 to 7:00, and again here, just prior to the scheduled school committee meeting for that evening. These forums would be open to any member of the community, any students, any staff who might wish to come and share their thoughts and feedback on the proposed, on the proposed option here to support a change in start times. And then, you know, in terms of the options, I see three right now, ultimately, but I think maybe there could be four if you consider back to the ability to adjust that Wildwood time. First off, would be to, you know, to approve the proposed change here in what's been presented here, and that that would take effect in the 2023-24 school year, so next fall. Option two would be to approve the proposed change, but if it was felt based upon feed, that feedback that families, staff, students felt like more time was needed before what would be, what would be a recommendation for a January decision, then I suppose a possibility could be to make that change, but starting in 2024, 2025. And then the third option would be to not make any changes and to stick with the current schedule. So the next steps, again, just to kind of highlight here, obviously, we're here tonight for this presentation, the forums on the proposal here, the timeline for four, two forums, December 21st, January 18th, and then on January 25th, the thought would be, if you felt as a committee that you could make a final decision. Certainly, it would be my, it is my thought to make sure that this is shared with our community at large, I know that many watch these meetings and follow the activity of your meetings here, but not everyone. And I've found another volunteer to join me in the Wildcat Corner next week, and we are going to, I had to twist an arm, but she's going to do it, and we're going to, we are going to record something next Tuesday, I think it is, on this, also to try and socialize this with the community, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the committee. I know it's been a tremendous amount of work and time and organization, so we appreciate that. Next, we will move to item A, which is the Wildwood Study Options Updates, Dr. Brand. And there is a slideshow for this.
There is, yeah. Could you, do you have? Okay.
I can find it on my flash drive, but you are going to do...
Well, I think because, no, you thought that, I'll just walk through it.
That's fine, we can look at the memo.
But just...
We have this one, but we didn't have the last one, so I'm just confused.
Sorry, I had it here, and where did it go?
It's in our packet.
No, I know, but I, I need it. Jeez, I'm sorry, hold on.
That's all right. While you're looking for that, I'm just going to say a welcome to Audrey Lacant, who's our high school representative, and sitting in to report back to the student body at the high school, and thank you for being here. This is, this is a change in how we've had our reps before, and there'll be more to come on that, as far as having a bit more interaction with the reps, but...
That's fantastic.
This came from actually the conference...
Thank you.
That you had shared with Mr. Gendron.
Yes, oh, wonderful. I'm glad you took part of that.
Audrey was able to attend that, and so...
Wonderful. Good, I'm glad. Well, that makes me happy. Thank you for participating.
I never say hi to everybody, so hi, and thank you. You've been a very active participant in our meeting, and we appreciate that, so thank you so much for being here.
Sorry, folks.
Are you good, man?
It's my bad. You know, I'm really... I'm really not, can you fill time for a second?
A little tap dance.
You want my computer?
Someone filibuster.
I have it on my flash drive.
So can we talk about how great Elf was?
Fill time. Yeah, so I'm going to, that means, quick. Here we go. Thank you, sorry, sorry, everybody. Yes, there are four members of the community, though there are items that are included in this packet and to provide you with an important update on another very, very important topic and project moving forward, and that is the Wildwood... and it provides you with an important update on another very, very important topic and project moving forward, and that is the Wildwood, and the exploration of what an interim solution would be. At the Wildwood, the latest Wildwood Building Committee meeting, the, this presentation was shared, and just to quickly highlight where we're at with this, there are a number of challenges, I think, that people know with the recent options that were, were put together by our consultant, Doran Whittier. And with those options came a number of challenges that included overall costs to the town and to the taxpayers, as well as time to completion, and as well, the potential disruption to grades and grade configuration across the district. With that, what emerged was the recognition that we needed to circle back and explore another possibility. And that other possibility that was asked for some more time was to explore the possibility of including the middle school in alignment with the West. And so at the, those are the challenges that really emerged with, at first, the sixteen top options, and I think we went down to eight. The consideration of the middle school, again, sort of was not something that Doran Whittier was asked to look at or examine, fundamentally because of the fact that it was, it is, continues to be believed to not be physically designed in a way that could isolate the younger population just by its layout. But in addition to that, trying to meld an entire school of twelve classrooms and a whole lot of support staff with the existing middle school, despite the fact that there's been the decline in enrollment over the years, as we know, from a peak of over nine hundred to now hovering around six, to, you know, knowing that facility well, the idea of integrating the entire Wildwood into that building is far more difficult, and I would use the word, I think, impossible, the impact of that. However, after further consideration, the idea of using two sites instead of one, well, not ideal, emerged as something worthwhile to explore, and that's how that arose. And, you know, in the packet, the snapshot there, this came through with Doran Whittier's work to identify the fact that there is capacity at the middle school, and that there's no question of, there's capacity at the high school here, too. That there's no question of, but capacity on paper is one thing, the ability to appropriately carve out or identify space for a specific program is quite another. So after some consultation with our team, with the middle school administration, with the Wildwood administration, this is what is emerging as a proposed plan. And this plan would incorporate both the Wildwood, include both the West as well as the middle school. And on this slide, and you can see the proposal as it stands right now, is that there would continue to be five classrooms at the West Intermediate School, of which there are five right now, and seven that would be coming from the Woburn Street and the Shawshene would be, would be combined at the middle, will be combined at the middle school. Not necessarily those exact same classrooms, I do want to note that, but there will be a total of seven classrooms at the middle school. You can see the corresponding population estimation there from a number of students standpoint. And really, what emerged with further analysis was, there is a section of the building at the middle school in the lower level that really, with this number of seven classrooms, as well as utilizing the library media space, we can create almost a small school within a school. It is, of course, right across the street from the West, it's not under one roof, so it's certainly not ideal, but from many vantage points in terms of allowing staff to be closer together, to really almost eliminating any staff travel to the different sites and other benefits we see, it's, I would argue, far better, far, far better than what we currently are relying upon the Wildwood staff to have to do. This is the highlight, it's a, I know it's a little bit hard to see here, but the lower level, if you're looking at the facility, the middle school, from the street level, this is on the far right-hand side. And really, that door fourteen, as it's called, or we're calling it, I think it's numbered that, is not exactly directly across the street from the front doors of the West, but pretty close. And again, it's understood in the elements and such, it's not ideal if I'm a reading teacher or a certain teacher that may have to travel from one facility to the other. But certainly, the idea here is that students would not have to travel. Now, with that being said, we still have some, we're at the, call it the fifteen-thousand-foot view of this, and we've figured out the plan of where to put them. There may be a desire to utilize the gymnasium at the West for the smaller students, that may seem better than the middle school. We still have to explore that, but certainly, by and large, students will stay in the facilities that they're in. But there may be opportune times to bring the students also together, if there's an assembly, if there, you know, those kind of things certainly emerges opportunities that don't exist right now. So, you know, I think that there are a number of benefits with this plan, I won't go through them all here, but, you know, really highlighting about, I think the centerpiece of this is bringing the staff back together, the consolidation of resources, and certainly that front and center is staff, but other things as well, too. The other facet of this plan that is being included is the construction of some sort of outdoor play space at the middle school, albeit temporary, if you wish to call it that, because I don't imagine that once a new Wildwood school, whatever that looks like is brought online, we would, or the town would necessarily leave outdoor play space at the middle school. But there is the space to construct that area, or the area to construct that space at the middle school that would be accessible for the years that the program would be there. As everything often does, there are challenges, this also is not perfect, and I highlighted the Wildwood staff. By our estimations right now, and I will want to underscore the point, that it's still early in the overall analysis of where people will go and the net, or the impact on the middle school staff. But it is the case that we will have to ask for the support of a certain number of middle school staff that would have to travel from one classroom to the next for their programming. I think it would be a very small number, but that is not the case right now at the middle school. My understanding is that, for the most part, almost every educator has their own dedicated space. Certainly, that's ideal, but certainly, that's the case that you, you know, there's lots of schools that we could quickly find in which there unfortunately are needed staff to travel. We have that right now in our district in some locations. So the cost is, this is something that is very active and very fluid, literally as we speak. There have been a lot of, a lot of time, Ken Lord's been a big asset, working with Paul, the town, and our consultant, Doran Whittier. We have a follow-up meeting tomorrow, in which we expect to get some pretty hard costs for the playground, as well as the restrooms. The restrooms is one facet that is being considered, and I won't go into detail here unless you have questions about that right now, but that's one limitation of the middle school that we have to adjust for. And so there will be costs, certainly, with this plan, and those are being calculated. So where, sort of brings to the next steps, the Wildwood Building Committee, School Building Committee is scheduled to meet next Tuesday. I think we're doing that virtually. Again, that's a public meeting for anyone who wishes to attend, and the purpose of that meeting is to provide an update for that committee on the total costs of this project as we see them. Estimates as they will be, but closer to what we truly believe to be actual costs, the playground, the restrooms, and other things that are incorporated in this. The plan still is to ask that committee to make a final decision or a recommendation to you as a school committee on that, and then that would be coming to you at your December twenty-first meeting, that recommendation, rather. And that will include an estimation of the costs. And, you know, the timeline here is being pushed, but it's being pushed in a manner to try and get this total dollar value to the town manager, so that he can respectively plan his budget to incorporate, or to plan for these expenses. So happy to ask you any questions you may have.
Mrs. Burns.
Quick question with regards to the restrooms, is it that where those classrooms are being proposed, are there not any restrooms on that side of the building?
So that facility has one set of student bathrooms on every floor.
Okay.
And they're sizable bathrooms, and they're certainly appropriate for the population there, but they're not appropriate to have co-mingling of students of this different age level. And certainly, you can find K-8 schools or pre-K-8 schools around the Commonwealth, you can find them. But absolutely, what you would find is a different appropriation of bathroom, restroom spaces. So that's not present there, so they have to be constructed, and that's what the consultants have been looking at, where best to put them for the least amount of money, and.
That would, I think.
Age appropriate.
Well, that and be a part of, I mean, that's, you're building a permanent, you're building a permanent addition, is what you're doing.
Well, it would be reconfiguration of internal space, so it wouldn't be an addition outside the building. It would be seizing some portion of space somewhere near that lower level that we're talking about. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Just a comment of thanks to the group who's done this work. I mean, for me personally, I think my, the appeal of sort of renovating or retrofitting the Wildwood and putting staff back in there, I was not a fan of, and so while I understand this is preliminary, and there's a lot of work still to be done, this option feels significantly better to me than the others we'd explored. The, you know, the closeness of the staff, again, not in the same building, but the proximity, it just, I like this direction, so I'm excited to see what the actual proposal looks like, so thank you.
To follow on part of that, I do think that the benefit is clear of being that close. The amount of time staff are currently spending in their cars, not with children, is a significant problem educationally. So a couple of questions and concerns, one is, the way the Wildwood's been placed in the West, and similarly, currently with Shawshene and Woburn Street, impacts those schools. So the bottom piece about anticipated costs, additional modifications to the West, I don't think should be underestimated. That if we're definitely saying for five more years-ish, there will be Wildwood students there, what we had to impact previously at the West should be definitely better accommodated, so that we're not impacting the students who are in the West for those years. The other side of it is, right now, I understand from Principal Bissell, that occasionally, students are walking to the boutwell to use the playground there. It's a forty-five-minute exercise, to take the kids from there, walk them down the street and go there. And while it's critically important that kids get that extra outdoor time, it is a long commitment of time. There are parts of the middle school plot that are almost as far from the West school as the boutwell is. So if, depending on where that playground is placed at the middle school, it could be a significant amount of time to get the kids organized out back, if it's on a far location in the middle school. So that leads to the question of a playground at the West, which could be a twofold benefit, one be built to accommodate the five or six years of kindergarten, pre-K children, but if it was done appropriately, could also finally fill the gap that's been at the West for years about not having a playground for the fourth and fifth graders. So that one could be a permanent structure, or potentially a larger structure that spans the grades, but I think it should be considered that if we're doing this to help the Wildwood, we're also impacting the West and to facilitate the proper physical activity of both age groups. Having a playground built at the West now as part of this proposal, I think would be really, really the right time to do it. In theory, it could have, could have, would have, should have been done years ago, but it's the right time to do that. And then the last thing is, in terms of space, I understand that kindergarten classrooms require a lot more storage space than middle school classrooms. I think it's probably a material number to think about the additional cabinets that will need to be bought and put into the classrooms at the middle school to accommodate the stuff of kindergarten. There's a lot of educational materials, so I think that one should be added to the list of costs potentially as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Fleming.
I'm just, on the heels of the special ed presentation, I'm still really thinking about that, and I just want, in the process of deciding, I guess, which classrooms will go if this is approved by this committee, to think about which classrooms would be the appropriate ones to move. And I'm thinking about the proposed budget to add a Shawshene classroom, which then funnels into the West. And so I think you were saying, the West is potentially, at some point, going to need an additional strides classroom. And I'm just, I'm just sort of thinking about puzzle pieces and wanting to be, and I know you will, but be really thoughtful about which classrooms are selected to go into which building, so that we are not asking teachers to move again in that interim period. So I think we have to really think about, anticipate all of that in this process.
I think it's, it is a good thing to be concerned about, and I think it is, it can't be, you know, we can't predict the future, of course, but, you know, we are, we are up against the, we're up against space constraints and moving, you know, and closing this building, and yes, there is space to do this, but, you know, if the question were to, you know, do we need to add another, what happens if we need to add another classroom at the Wildwood? Where's that going to go? What happens if we have, so there, I'm confident this plan can work, but if the future holds for a continual need to find space for some of these more intensive programs, we are going to have to think very, very carefully about where those are going to go, you know, and really assess that. So I think we are in a place where we just collectively, not just at this campus, not just because of this Wildwood move, but in general, and again, this goes back to the age of the facilities we're talking about. Nineteen fifty, these buildings do not have the space for some of these more intensive programs. And so we're going to have to be, we're going to have to be very cautious in watching this as we go forward. You know, and this plan can work, but we will, we have to make some changes at the West to move a music classroom out of cafeteria, but the West will be, the West will be full. The Shawshene will have a little bit of space freed up there by removing a couple of classrooms, but not a lot, and the Woburn Street, too, so.
I just want to address for the community, because I've been hearing, and a lot of people have concerns about this proposal, and sort of comments about it really being a primarily financially-driven decision, which is not true. And a lot of questions about modular units still kind of floating around, which I even asked at the last Wildwood Building Committee meeting. And there's, there is a shortage of that, so time to completion is a really big deal. We want to try to situate teachers into classrooms in a more long-term, short-term scenario for next year. And modulators would not provide us that opportunity, so people need to really understand that. That's not the availability of modulators, there's a shortage, you can't find them. And so that is, that's just a reality that we are contending with, because I would love to have, to be able to consider that, too, to address this space issue that we're sort of up against as well, but it's the reality of what we're facing right now.
So, I mean, I appreciate this plan, and I think when I look at all the other proposals, this seems to be the, a much better solution, but I'm curious about, like, the costs of it, you know, as it compares to the other ones. The other thing that I'm curious about is the impact on the middle school. I know that there's, moving the library is one thing. What are the other impacts we foresee happening on the middle school besides that?
Yes, so not to minimize it, and certainly not, and I, you know, the, what we're talking about here is the Library Media Center, of course, as was captured, and then these, right now, this plan for seven teachers. So, you know, but in addition to that, there's some other moving parts that will be accompanying this, which we're still working on to flush that out. So to say that there won't be an impact on the middle school staff would be incorrect, there will be. But with the overall space, square footage-wise and classroom space in that facility, they are working hard, their team is working hard to sort of rethink that, and that is inclusive of some of the smaller office spaces, of which there are other office spaces in the facility on the upper levels. And then, too, that domino of the staff that I mentioned, that it would be shortsighted to sit here and say that there won't be some teachers that will. shortsighted to sit here and say that there won't be some teachers that will unfortunately have to probably share space, maybe need to move from space to space. So we're, we're, you know, that's being looked at very carefully right now with the middle school staff. So, you know, I won't say that that's it. It's certainly, that's something and it's significant, but in terms of the access to the gymnasium, the auditorium, the other spaces, the ebb and flow of traffic or, or students, you know, I think that the, the middle school can largely, will look and feel like it does today. The start times, no matter what, whatever decision you're making as a committee around that, the Wildwood still has its own time. It will be separate from the middle school. So, you know, the, there will be more traffic on that site for sure, but, you know, I think that it, the two can coexist and the middle school can still be the middle school with teaching teams, the core teams as it knows it. We're working on a schedule, as you know, so that's just a parallel track here, but nothing because of this move if this happens here.
But yes, I would like to, I would let David go first if you'd like.
You guys figure it out.
I want to talk for just a minute about the bathroom construction. I know this is something we haven't worked out all the details of, but I don't know, anyone who's ever gone through a bathroom, even a bathroom renovation, it's a, you know, it's a major thing. And if we're talking about actually constructing a new restroom from a place where there isn't any of the plumbing or any connections to septic, I mean, that's, that's major construction.
Yes.
And, you know, and it was mentioned in the presentation as one of the challenges about disruption of the middle school. But it's like, yeah, I mean, like if you, if you have serious, you know, major construction going on in that first floor, that is going to be highly disruptive. And I don't know if some of that can be pushed off towards the summer, but that gets to be, presumably as much as possible, we would do that during the summer, but that gets dicey as well, because that's, you know, it's like ten weeks. And then it's just like, we got the start of school coming up. And so you have to be careful about that. But can you talk a little bit about some of the discussions that, that have been had with Doran Woodyer?
Well, better after tomorrow, to be honest. You know, in terms of their, they ca- they, you know, being in the work that they do and can look at a, a building, you know, certainly different than, than I can, in terms of where the best possible space would be. But wherever that space is, you know, I think, you know, it will be a question of how the funds are secured, which is obviously Jeff Hall, you know, his town manager will be in the mix of that if, but the construction that we're talking about here, and certainly my hope is, A, it's happening over the summer. And B, with this decision being formalized now, or call it, you know, in a couple of weeks, there can be all of the efforts with whomever's going to do that work to be ready to go, if it's July first, or if it's, you know, hopefully earlier. Not while school is in session, but to have it ready to go. The, really the restroom piece, I mean, work has been, the Library Media Center, you know, that, thoughts down to the details of movers and relocating that. That's all in the works as well too. But that's, again, I would say, the advantage of this plan is that this can be, should be all ready to go for the start of school in the fall, so.
And if I could, I don't want to, I don't want to repeat too much what other people have said and, and what I said at the Wildwood Building Committee meeting. But I, I do want to also lend my, I don't know, not exactly concern, but we need to think about this. Obviously, this, this whole project is motivated by the fact that we have a school community without a school. And so we need to find, you know, we need to do right by the Wildwood students and staff and find a place for them to be and where they could be a school community. But this is going to have major impacts on our other schools. And of course, it always has. The moment we spread them out to other buildings, we had host schools. And so I think we, it's very important that we really do think about this kind of holistically, that it's not just a matter of like, okay, this is the Wildwood solution. We have a three-school, two-building solution that we're working on here. That's going to obviously, you know, very strongly impact the West and the middle school. And so, you know, thinking about the middle school, you know, we have a lot of good momentum, I think, going on, that there's a lot of important work being done at the middle school. And people want to feel that that's not going to be interrupted and that their students are not going to be, you know, adversely impacted by, you know, by this, by this new system, this new plan that we're coming up with. And, you know, likewise at the West, if, you know, if they're for the next five years going to be hosting the Wildwood program, we really need to think about what additional resources can we give them? Because, you know, they're going to be, they're going to be bearing burdens, like, you know, the middle school in the West are going to be, you know, bearing burdens that some, that the other schools in the district are not. And so we need to both make sure that we do right by all of those students, but also just try to, you know, if they're bearing some of the burdens, then maybe we can also give them some benefits to counteract that. And, and I want to just make sure that we're thinking about this as holistically as we can, so that we, you know, everything is a trade-off, everything is to some extent a compromise, but really make sure that we are, and that people feel that we're doing all that we can. Whether that's again, like the playground over at the West, some of the other options that, that we've talked about.
Can I just jump in on that?
Yeah.
Just because I, I think that's really important. And I, I, one way I think to do some of that is to make sure that we are involving the, the staff and the teachers in now some of what's going to be bits and pieces of, of managing that. And right now, I don't want it to feel very top-down and then there's no sort of like ownership and investment. And I want them to be a part of this, to feel as though this is, this is their decision as well in terms of what it looks like and who goes where. And, and how we can all kind of support what's happening as opposed to feeling like it's, like that term burden, like I don't want it to feel that way. I, I know, I know exactly what that means, but I want it to feel like we're doing this in support of our, our Wildwood. But also what could the potential benefits be as well? I mean, I like to look at the glass half-full. So I'm like, ooh, there could be this. And it would be really helpful for the middle schoolers to sort of see younger children. Like, I think there are some things that could come out of this that could be quite positive, that would be helpful for children of that age. And I know that I'm not going to frame it all like that, because there are certainly other things that need to be thought of. But one way to do that is to just include the stakeholders in this work. And that includes the teachers, you know, other staff there, and of course, families. And then the students. Like, I would love to hear from middle schoolers about ways they could make the Wildwood students feel welcome there. And I just think there's some really interesting opportunities here that I hope we can all kind of rally around if, if this does wind up being the choice for Wildwood.
And I, I, I'm not going to repeat, but in terms of concerns about,
You can hear.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not, because, because you, you've all made,
Tracy goes copy paste, copy paste.
You've all made different elements of the concern about the middle school, but also the opportunity. And by the way, you might want to put some soundproofing in between the cafeteria and where the Wildwood would be, because I hear the cafeteria and the middle school's a little loud. But then there's the one other small point, and it's actually not a small one, is some of these teachers will be asking them to move for a third summer, or third time March, and then some moved last summer, and some might have to move a third time. So we should, I would hope we'd consider the impact of them. Moving a kindergarten and pre-K classroom is a lot of work. Days and days to pack it up and then set it up. And so that's something we should at least consider. Because that would be work they would need to do in June and/or August, when they might otherwise have other things to do, so.
I, I appreciate all your comments. I think, you know, the, I think at the core of this, we need to also remember that we are going to, as a district, unfortunately, as a community, have to endure less than an ideal, ideal situation. This has, this has caught up with us, right? This, this has caught up with our community after, you know, sort of this, this lingering sort of reality here for this building. And while not perfect, you know, I think keeping in mind for a Wildwood or future Wildwood family that, as well as our staff, that the instructional space arguably will be far, far greater in the middle school and, and in the West than otherwise would be the case for the learning environment at the Wildwood, as well as for our staff. And so this is, you know, it's going to be a little painful at times. We're going to have to readjust certainly. And it, you know, it's, it's a long-term temporary. But I know I keep telling myself this is a lot of work to get to, and we're not even there yet, but far better of a learning space and workspace for our staff and for our families than otherwise returning to the Wildwood, so.
And then just a simple, you know, gratitude to, to everybody involved in this work. I know that these particular meetings, but then the teachers and the staff and people who have been doing this work and moving in and out, I just can't express enough just how, how wonderful people have been about trying to, to do our best for the Wildwood. And so, so we are grateful. And I hope that as we move forward, it, it feels less like a burden, although I know there will be components of that. And, and more like we're actually, there's a plan in place that's going to be beyond just a few months. And I think this moment to moment can be so trying for teachers and staff and students that where, where are we going to be next? So I'm hopeful that at least knowing a little bit of the event will be helpful to, to our teachers. And Jen, oh, I don't know who's,
I think he hit it.
Go ahead.
I, I just want to add one more thought, which is, I hope that this is something that we, because, because then this is a, you know, short-term, long-term. We're talking about, you know, five years, probably minimum, of doing this. I hope that this is something that we continually think about and revisit, that the options that we have right now are not necessarily the only options we'll ever have over the course of these five years. And there's a tendency, of course, in a lot of organizations to kind of, you know, do something and then kind of just wash your hands of it and be like, well, you know, we did that. And then you kind of never look at it again. And I think it's something that we want to be coming back to and thinking about. Do we have other options now, even if it's just that, well, you know, we spent a little money, you know, on it this year, and now we can spend a little more money in next year's budget. And some money in next year's budget and make this something that we continually try to improve and not just say, well, this is our solution. It's a one-time thing and then never touch it again.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Miss.
Sorry. It's okay.
I'm here. I thought it was Stiefel in my mind. I was like, Mr. Turner, and then I realized it was Ed from you. Sorry, Mrs. Bryce.
Not this time.
Sorry, I'm getting punchy. I, I do want to say that this, yes, it, it'll be difficult. It's a transition and it's a, it's a temporary. Yeah, but I think, not to be idealistic, but this will be a true test to our school communities. And it's about bridging that support. It's just as difficult for our Wildwood staff. I think we're, it's, it's a benefit that you've touched upon to go into the middle school. And it's not their, it's, it's not their realm, you know? It's not their space. But I think it's, it would be, it's a good lesson in practice of, 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 of community at its best. You know, it's, everyone, I think, carries a certain, I, I have to agree with you, Mrs. Bryce, when you said that you don't like to use the word burden, because it's, I, I like to say challenge. I, I think maybe perhaps that might be, but, but I get, I get it. But, you know, it's about problem solving together and collaboratively. Even though, you know, you've got two different grades and ages, it's about coming together and trying to support one another in this transition, in this temporary, permanent scenario. And I'm, I'm going on your glass half-full. I, I do think, I, I think we, as, as we've always have, can navigate through it. And to, to make it, because I think we have to, to make it for the best experience for our students and their learning opportunities. And so I, I, I do have a lot of faith in our staff that will find, it's like a family. You, you find your, you'll have your tips, but you, you'll come together for the, for the greater good and for the, and the right reason. And I, I, I know that, I do have faith that this will, this will all transpire, you know, well.
We look forward to hearing about your next meeting and, what's that?
It's Tuesday.
And then your meeting with Doran Woodyer tomorrow, is there?
Yes.
Yep. So there'll be even more information coming at our next meeting. That brings us to subcommittee reports.
Yes. I've got two. I'm going to do the, the, the short one first, because it's easy.
They are uploaded on the board.
I saw. Thank you so much.
So just to let you know, I'm not sure who may be on the, the email list for MAS E that the president-elect for 2023, Stacy Rizzo, did send out information about committee appointment requests. Anybody who's interested, I think I, I talked about it after conference, about some of the committees that MAS E has, that if anyone has any interest to fill out the application form, the request form in some minute. And then the wellness, the School Wellness Advisory Committee met last Tuesday. Some of the updates from it is that on the food services piece, Mary Palin attended the Fall SNA Conference that focused on scratch cooking from scratch. And she also went to the leadership retreat, which focused specifically on staff retention, the shortages in labor and supply issues facing districts. She also made note of the gobble-gobble day, that where the administration, I think, were serving lunches to students, if I'm correct? So that was some of the items. And something mindful that really kind of struck me, because you're right, we're all in that budget season, is that she did, she did, she wasn't present, but she did send notes about how the cost of like fresh produce currently and, and the, the difficulty in getting fresh produce with, between deliveries and transportation issues, that a case of romaine lettuce went from forty-eight dollars per case to a hundred and ten per case. So just to keep that in perspective, and we, we see all that Mary and her team does for students to, making sure our students have the best opportunities for healthy lunches. Just something to be mindful of when, when, you know, the cost of the, the food that comes into our districts and the increased costs. But anyway, moving forward, we were hopeful, Laura Stinson and was hopefully, hoping, hopefully hoping, excuse me, to pilot a, a, a curriculum for pre-K through, I think, kindergarten grades, which looked quite interesting and I think quite fascinating, but with everything that's going on within our district right now with the Wildwood transitioning, the buildings and all this, all these areas, they've decided to put it on hold in order to give it a really viable opportunity. They don't want to overburn the teachers with piloting a new curriculum. So, and after discussion members thought that ti- that the Mark Program is in its beginning of its rollout phase and that with the schools completing those required lessons, you know, the teachers have already enough on their plate to focus on for success. So that, that will be probably coming out hopefully in the next, not the upcoming school year, but the following after that. The school nurses at the North and West developing a new growth and development program that they'll present to students at future meetings. They're looking at aspects of videos and things to bring forth to our younger generation about, how do I put it? Growth and development programs and maturity and body changes, things of that sort. Ms. Stinson also allowed us to know that there will be new frameworks coming out in the spring from DESI that will create new comprehensive health curriculum frameworks. So that public comment will be coming out, so that there'll be changes in PE curriculum soon after. Shelley Newhouse did discuss, we had a discussion about the flu, COVID, RSV cases currently in Wilmington and the interesting data regarding the number of people coming in for COVID boosters shots. The numbers, I guess, increase with the age of, of folks. And if there's anybody interested, I told her I would let everyone know that her office will be having another booster clinic at the Town Hall on December nineteenth from one to three. It should be on the website if it's not already there, if it's not there, but there'll be reminders and links that should be going out to families. So if anybody, anybody can go. You can be a resident in Wilmington, but she'll vaccinate anybody you can get in. But, so that's, that's pretty much in a nutshell, but thank you.
Thank you so much. There's also a subcommittee report from the Finance and Budget Subcommittee that you can take a look at. Stephen, did you want to say anything else about that?
Very, very short and to the point. We've had three meetings. We've met each time with a representative of the Finance Committee from town to help keep them in the loop. Particularly, we've gone through and touched on special education at the high level. The, the state ma- state-approved increases for sp- specifically for out-of-district placements. And then the, the other major drivers for the, the budget this coming year and potential changes and increases.
Anything else? Subcommittees? Correspondents?
None this evening.
Future, future school committee dates, we have December twenty-first, seven PM. We'll have the forum ahead of time at six PM. And so we're not, I'm not exactly, I'm going to think about how we'll structure that, is whether or not that'll just be
Sure.
the committee, the school start time committee who's sort of managing that. And then we'll just be here to listen, you know, but a forum means there'll be some Q and A. So we'll talk what that's going to look like. But of course, all school committee members are invited. I don't know if we'll all be participating, but we're all invited. And that will happen at six o'clock. And then I believe there are some subcommittee groups meeting at five o'clock, so. Very busy. January eighteenth is the first meeting in 2023 at seven.
January eighteenth is the first meeting in 2023 at seven PM. I'm sure there'll be lots of other things around that meeting, but for now, that's all. There are some upcoming performances, I think, happening, so just take a look at the website. We know we have band tomorrow night, um, we have chorus. District calendar, band tomorrow night, chorus was last night, um, so strings is next week.
There's one, one on the tenth and one on the seventeenth, I believe, so double-check the district calendar.
Lots of opportunities to come and, and hear and see our students, and thank you all. And so many of us attended elephants, that was great, so thanks. It's great to see you all there. And I think that's it, so if there's nothing else, just a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Plowman, seconded by Mr. Fenley, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Good night.